So I hereby call to order this regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 1st, 2022. Sherry, would you call a roll, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Mr. Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
One vacancy.
One vacancy, okay. If you would all join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Begin. My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. It's going to be a little bit different tonight because of the location of my property. I'll be recusing myself for item two. And therefore, because Commissioner Nolan retired, we no longer have a vice chair. And the first thing on the agenda is nomination and election of a vice chair so that somebody can run the meeting for item two. Do we have any nominations for vice chair?
I have a suggestion.
Yes, ma'am.
I was wondering if we, the attorney may weigh in here, maybe we could do an interim vice chair and that you would select a permanent chair sometime in June or sometime after the positions are, the open positions are filled.
Once we're back at full strength, yeah.
Yeah. And this may very well be my last meeting also, so here there is a lot of applicants for the position for my, that I'm in. So I would be very happy with either Jamie or Trent running the meeting.
Well, the gavel is closer to John. I can just pass it to him.
I would nominate, I would nominate John, and I like the idea that Kathy has, which is that we wait maybe for a month or so until the slots are filled and we go through a more formal process.
And do both offices then. That's fine with me.
We do this as an interim.
I'd be happy to second that nomination.
I could, I could sit in for this meeting, be the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Be the vice chair. Well, it's for part of this meeting because when item two is over, it's legal for me to sit here again. So. Do we call a roll on that? I guess so. Now we do, oh, we need a, we need a motion after the nomination, okay. Okay, the nomination for vice chair is closed. If there's more than one nominee, a roll call will be taken for each, and there is only one. So do we? Okay, well, I'm happy to move that we make Commissioner Trent the interim vice chair of the Planning Commission. Second, anyone?
Second.
Great, okay, discussion. Sherry, let's call the roll then.
Chair Quilisi.
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Mr. Trent.
Am I allowed to vote on that?
Yeah.
Sure.
All right, sure, yes.
All right. You're unanimously interim. All right. We have next, public communications, that time to discuss items of city business other than what's on the agenda for tonight. And I have one card. If you wish to speak during public comment or on item two, when we get to that, you need to fill out a card and give it to Sherry so that she can keep the minutes straight as to who's here and who's speaking. All right, well, Bob Daddy, please come up, sir.
Planning Commission and Lucas and James and city attorney for tonight. I guess I'm a meeting late. I wanted to thank Kathy Nolan. Kathy Nolan has spent thousands upon thousands of hours sitting in complete streets, bicycle committees.
Tree committee?
She has been on the chair for, or she has been the chair of the Planning Commission, the vice chair. She has served for years and years and years. And I have the pleasure of working with her for a few decades. And I really think that the city, I don't know if they gave her a certificate or some type of a thank you accommodation. If not, it's late and there is time for the city to make amends and catch up on that. The other thing I'd like to ask for our city attorney directly on a point of order, if item two is going to be bifurcated, we have a number of items. We only have a necessity for a single recusal for a separate property, Troy Court at the end of Eucalyptus and Mallory Way. And I'm wondering what will prevent the current chair from keeping his seat for the other three items that do not have a distance restriction. And you can answer that when you want. The other thing is, I think that since we're doing a lot of projects, it is time for the city, which would be community development, to go ahead and get Title IX, the housing committee and the local committee and the building committee together to update some of our building codes for projects. We have radiant heat, recirculating water. We have tons and tons and tons of codes that have not been updated for a number of years that we really need to advance with the new, the new realities of limited water. And I'm not so worried about climate change right now as I am water, but I think we need to put some of these things in. And I would see things, and not these projects, obviously, but we need to go to some type of a recirculating water, not so much as a savings for fuel and, and carbon, but because we don't want people running their water for two, three, four, five minutes until it gets hot. So we need to get into today's reality, get the bad back together. It's obviously, we have somebody that is courageous enough to do some building here. And so while we're a little late for these projects, hopefully we'll be ready for the next ones. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else in the building or in the waiting room, Sherry, with a raised hand, wish to speak during public comment? I know we got a fair amount of email on the subject before the meeting. Right, that's for someone else to handle. Okay, disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts then. Commissioner Trent.
Familiar with the sites, visited all four, no ex parte contacts.
Okay. Commissioner Lottis? You're muted, ma'am. There you go.
Yes, I've, I'm familiar with all four sites and I have had no ex parte contacts.
Thank you. And Commissioner Bennett?
I'm familiar with all four sites and I have had no ex parte communication with any of the parties.
Very good. The same is true of me, but it won't matter because I'm about to leave. All right, then next is public hearing item number two, and I will leave the dais, come back.
Chair Quilisi.
Liberations and voting are done there.
Do you mind announcing the reason for your recusal?
I'm sorry?
Do you mind announcing the reason for your recusal?
The reason for my accusal, recusal, excuse me, is that part of my residential property is within 500 feet of one of these four parcels. Therefore, the state assumes that I have a financial stake in the, in the development project.
Good question. Does he need to recuse himself for all four or just one?
Correct. So that's a good question, interim vice chair. And I think that was what the public commenter was asking as well, is that Chair Quilisi does have to accuse himself for the entirety of the development agreement because even though it is four, even though it's going to be done in four phases, it's, it's one development agreement. So it's treated as one item, one deal, and that's why. But as a, as a private citizen, Steve, Steve Quilisi, as opposed to Chair Quilisi, is allowed to comment on how the project will affect him. And I believe he plans to do so tonight. So with that, we can proceed.
Okay. All right. So with that, we will move on to item two. And Sherry, just if you don't mind, do I read through the recommendation or how does this, how does this formally work? Okay. So the subject proposed development agreement for multifamily housing and affordable housing, totally 65 units, 20 residential units at a moderate income level and five residential units at a low income level, and located at four separate sites, including 312 West Aliso Street, 107 North Ventura Street, 304 South Montgomery Street, and 412 Mallory Way. Density increases for two sites, 107 North Ventura Street and 304 South Montgomery Street, and a zone change and general plan amendment for one site, 107 North Ventura Street, located within the city of Ojai, case number DA 21-037, property owners Ojai Bungalows LP, 304 South Montgomery Street, 4112 Mallory Way, 4312 West Aliso Street, Greenhawk LLC, the Baker Group, 107 North Ventura Street, and that the project is exempt from CEQA. With that, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, interim vice chair, Trent.
It's quite a title.
Good evening. My name is Lucas Cybert, Community Development Director for the city of Ojai. The item we have before each night was eloquently identified by vice chair as a proposed development agreement for 65 units on four different sites. What I'll do is I'll actually share my screen here and we'll go through, I have a PowerPoint to kind of walk through this project. So the project itself includes two different property owners on four different sites, Ojai Bungalows LP and Greenhawk LLC for a proposed development agreement. The proposal itself really comes to us, just to give some context to kind of set the table for, for tonight's discussion for the development agreement, started back in May of 2019, where city council appealed, and it was an appeal of the cottages time extension. That time extension was actually before this body for approval. This body approved it and then city council called the item up for an appeal. And the purpose for the appeal was really to address the, the need for affordable housing that was already currently on site and whether, where that's, where those affordable housing units were going to then be located either onsite or somewhere else offsite. So then that then created what's referred to as the ad hoc subcommittee that was created by the city council to start that negotiation. And that was a basically a three-year process, roughly two years of hard, hard discussion, negotiation. The two ad hoc committee members included council member Wirick and council member Blatz in that discussion. And I, I was a part of that as well, as well as a city manager, and there was some pretty tough discussions that, that went forward certainly in terms of meeting, conferring, and addressing the affordable housing component. At least 12 meetings that I was a part of directly before we ended up getting to the January 2022 city council discussion of the development agreement. I believe that was January 25th, where this development agreement that's before this body for discussion and recommendation to city council was, was, was noticed in the paper, but not noticed to each of those individual sites within the 300-foot radius. Not until this meeting where we, do we have a requirement per state law to, to do a notification within 300-foot radius. So that's what we're seeing here tonight. And then in, to, to help kind of set this table, the original sites that we'll be going through on the next slide include both Mallory Way, which is 30 units. I know I've seen comments that have been coming in identifying 65 units for Mallory Way. That is not correct. I just want to set the record straight that 65 units total for the four sites are what's being discussed with the development agreement, not 65 units on Mallory Way or 65 units that are being intermixed between cottages and Mallory Way. That's, that's, that's factually a false statement. I just want to make that record clear. The additional sites include World University, which were addressed, which is 107 North Ventura, and the Montgomery site, which is 304 South Montgomery. Each of those include the 10 units for World University and 15 units for Montgomery. So the sites, if you can see them here. The first phase is it would be cottages amongst the flowers. I'm circling that now, if you can see it here. That's 312 West Aliso Street. That would be 10 units on about 1.55 acres in size, all single story. The density for that allows for the 10 units that you would see there. The, the second phase would be World, World University, which is 107 North Ventura Street. That also is 10 units. The, that would actually require a, which is a part of this development agreement, a zone change and general plan amendment. So it would be going from a public zone or general plan use or designation to VMU or village mixed use. The density for this is, is five units. They would be looking for a density increase or a density bonus of up to 10, 10 units for this site. For this site, three of those units would be affordable of the 10. Two of those would be at moderate rate and one would be at a low rate. The third phase is Montgomery site, which is 304 South Montgomery Street. That would be 15 units on about 0.61 acres in size. The density for this site is, is five units. They're looking for a density of 15 units. So again, we're looking at a density bonus allowing for 15 units on this specific site. No zone change or general plan amendment. It's zone VMU, which allows for multifamily. And then the third, or I'm sorry, the fourth phase is the Mallory Way Bungalows, 412 Mallory Way, and that is 30 units on 3.5 acres roughly for this site. The density actually allows for up to 31. They're only, they're only moving forward with 30 units. And that's a part of the original approval by city council in 2012. Now, out of all four of these sites, Mallory Way and cottages amongst the flowers, it's, it's worth noting, but both of those went through environmental review. Cottages Amongst the Flowers went through an MND, mitigated negative declaration with mitigation measures applied to it. Those are still included within this project as, as a part of the development agreement. The same through, same thing is true with Mallory Way Bungalows. That project also had environmental clearance through an EIR with mitigation measures applied to that as well. This is kind of an overview of what I was just talking about, but I think it's important to note that cottages amongst the flowers is 10 units, and that was a part of the original approval in 2016 by this body, by this planning commission. No affordable units on this site, but within this development agreement, we're looking at 10-year rental covenant. So these units, as they're developed and renovated, would be at market rate rentals for 10 years. World University is 10 units as well. As I said before, three affordable, at an affordable rate, two moderate, one low. I think what's, what's worth noting is with this one, there is no, there's no anticipated changes to the exterior with the exception of maybe minor window changeouts to meet ingress egress requirements and potential door changeouts. With this project, as a part of the development agreement, unless there is exterior changes, that would be handled through a plan check. If there are exterior changes that are proposed, then we're looking at the potential for either a DE or design review, which design review would come before this body. The Montgomery site is 15 units, as I had mentioned earlier, 15 affordable units, 12 of those being at moderate rate, three at low. That site is currently vacant. So the, any proposal that would come forward to this body would be reviewed in terms of the site plan and in terms of the elevations. Now, the density at 15 units through this development agreement would be set. Just a matter of, of identifying the locations of the buildings in relationship to the parking. And the last phase with phase four, Mallory Way Bungalows is the 30 units. Seven of those units would be at an affordable rate, six at a moderate and one at low. I'm not sure if I mentioned that in the previous slide, but. And I should note that with Mallory Way, which is, which was approved by city council back in 2012, and cottages among the flowers, which was approved by planning commission in 2016, neither one of those are identifying any changes to what was originally approved. So they're, they're moving both of these forward as is with no modifications to what was originally approved. Now, an overview of the development agreement, affordable versus market, we're looking at 65 new or renovated units to the Ojai housing stock in favor of, of the housing element. 25 affordable units, 20 of those would be moderate and five would be low. Before I go to the next point, I think it's worth noting within our housing element, which was adopted by city council back in October of 2021, it identified through our RENA, our Regional Housing Needs Assessment, a requirement over the next eight years to address affordable housing to the tune of 53 units. This project, if approved by city council on recommendation by planning commission for consideration tonight, would take those 53 units and drop it down to 19. Now, why doesn't it take it all the way down to zero or close to that? Because there are already existing units which we can't count, which have already been counted previous, to previous other cycles to our housing element. But we can certainly count some, if not most, of the units. And I've already done the precalculations in terms of how we can draw that number down. Now, that's a part of our annual arena that we, that we go through, which is the annual progress report or APR that gets sent off to the state. So the second piece to this is the deed restricted affordable units. Currently, any of the units that are on site are not deed restricted. Affordable housing agreement would then secure those 25 units, the 20 plus the five, for a period of 55 years, and that would be recorded. There is also a trail that would be built and maintained by the owner and developer, and that would be an easement in, in favor of the city for a walking hiking trail through Mallory Way, which is that 30-unit project, as well as the cottages among the flowers, which is that 10-unit project. Both of those are smashed up against each other. That would be built and maintained by the owner and developer, and that's included within this development agreement. As I'd mentioned before, there is a phased development. The first phase is cottages amongst the flowers, then World University, then Montgomery site, Mallory Way Bungalows. That's within a 10-year period as per the development agreement. So on average, you're looking at about a two-year, two and a half-year build period for each of those phases. And I think it's also worth noting is there's water recharge within and proposed within Mallory Way and cottages. That's actually a part of the development agreement as well. So the developer, which had been noted earlier, is, is being charged with creating something referred to as an engineering assessment report. And that is, that is actually taking a look at the existing engineering and trying to find ways and creative solutions to retain as much water and percolation on site as possible versus doing V-ditches and, and culverts to get the water off the site as quickly as possible. I think it's worth noting what's next here. So obviously, there's the review and consideration by planning commission tonight as a recommendation to city council, and then review and consideration of the development agreement and associated ordinance, draft ordinance at a publicly noted city council meeting, similar in a fashion for, for tonight, meaning each of the sites and the encompassing 300-foot radius to those residents would be notified for city council as well. And then if approved by city council, then a second reading of the development agreement and, and that associated ordinance would come forward. And then the developer would then begin preparation of the documents, affordable housing agreements, the engineering assessment report I had mentioned earlier, and other documents prior to cottages amongst, amongst the flowers polling permits to move forward. So there's some, there's some work that needs to still be done and, and, and certainly with the developer and with, with the city as well before this, this gets, the dust gets settled. And staff is recommending approval of this item with the development agreement as currently drafted. So with that, if the commission has any questions of staff, I could certainly answer them.
All right, we'll open it up for commissioners to ask questions of staff. Does anybody have any?
Yes, but you can't see me.
No, we can't see you yet. That's okay. Did you, did you want to ask now?
Sure. Hang on a second here. Okay. So I may, I may ask, I, so I have to comment on the, the huge volume of material.
There's a lot.
I tried my best, but this was pretty awful coming out before a three-day weekend. I've, I've spent almost two solid days on this thing, but I feel that I do not have mastery of all the material. So I apologize if I ask questions that you've already talked about or put in the staff report. But I'm just trying to get clear. So this all started with, let's see, planning commission approved a one-year extension of time. I believe I was on the commission at that time. And it seemed as though it was kind of a rote action. But it got to city council in May of 2019, and the council appointed an ad hoc committee to work on affordable housing replacement. And then some, and then, and then all of a sudden in January 2022, city council discussed the proposed development agreement, which I, I actually did not know about, and voted to proceed with this current development agreement proposal. So what, what happened between May 2019 and January 2022, January 2022? And, I mean, where was the council direction to expand to four parcels? I just, it just seems like it went from one parcel and now we're talking about four and. I don't know. I mean, I appreciate the work council did on this, but in the negotiating, but I, I just feel like there's a pretty blank space there. Was there council guidance on this to go ahead and do that?
Yeah, I mean, over the last, over the last three, two and a half, almost three years with the ad hoc committee, there's been a lot of, and mind you, that, that ad hoc committee was created by city council and gave direction to negotiate with the developer to come up with a strategy to address the, the affordable housing that was being, that wasn't being accounted for. So that's really kind of where it started. And it was, and I mean, mind you, typically a process like this wouldn't take two and a half years, but when you have the pandemic that's weighing on you and you've got additional sites that need to be addressed, either they're onsite in terms of the units or they're offsite. So the, the developer chose to find sites offsite or properties offsite. The developer didn't own, when this process started three years ago, the developer, developer didn't own 304 South Montgomery. They didn't have, aside from maintenance and, and management of 107 North Ventura, didn't have a stake in, in how they were addressing that site as well. So both of those sites came online as a part of the negotiations with the ad hoc and the discussions that went forward with the ad hoc and developed over time. And that's really what ended up being brought back to council in January of this year as a development agreement. And staff worked with the developer and with the ad hoc committee very closely to monitor how, how, one, the development agreement was was built from the ground up. And two, how each of these sites would carry the affordable housing units that you're seeing as a part of this proposal tonight.
And interim vice chair, if I could jump in with a little bit of additional information. Good evening, everybody. At the May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen city council meeting, when the appeal was considered, new information was brought to light by Mr. Miley first, which raised the concern regarding the compliance with the city's inclusionary housing ordinance, which requires for any existing tenant occupied housing that meets certain conditions about its existing rent levels, that it be replaced with similar tenant occupied housing. And the question was raised whether or not the cottage among the flowers project as proposed in nineteen complied or did not comply with that project. Rather than solve it at the dais, the direction was in a five oh vote by the city council in public to create an ad hoc committee to negotiate a resolution to the issue. In the course of the resolution of that, as the community development director noted, it became evident that there's not enough land to meet the required amount of units on that one site. Hence, the deal was put together to bring it into a comprehensive deal that has the affordable, the necessary affordable units across all four sites. And that, and it was two and a half years in negotiating that obviously between COVID was part of it, but also in that same space took time to sort out what it would look like to reach the deal we've reached. But I want to just emphasize that it was the May fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen public city council meeting, which is was created, and then negotiations from there through the ad hoc committee. Thank you.
Kathy Lottis, do you have any additional questions?
Yes, exactly. I have a, I have a list of questions. I'll just tell you right now. Given the magnitude of the material, I hope you'll be understanding. So so how, how many units are actually on cottages among the flowers now where people are living?
Yeah, so cottage amongst the flowers, among the flowers has eight units currently.
Okay, and in a comment letter, I think that came in this afternoon, somebody said they thought it was thirty.
There, there are twenty-five units on on Mallory Way.
Oh, maybe they're, maybe they're inflating it too. I don't know. Okay. So I mean, it did sound like that from the staff report that there were eight units on cottages among the flowers. So, so we're talking about eight units. But being, becoming affordable, correct? For this, this, I mean, that's how this project started. There are eight units on cottages among the flowers because of the provision for replacement of affordable housing in the code. We're talking eight units.
Correct, for cottages.
Right. So why can't we do eight units on the cottages parcel that are affordable?
So that's where the negotiation started, and that's, that's why there was an ad hoc committee created. Is to to identify alternative sites, potential alternative sites for the for the affordable units that they're looking to to reallocate to a, to either that site or to a different site. They chose a different site, which is the reason why three oh four South Montgomery came online as well as one oh seven North Ventura Street.
I'm not hearing a rationale for why they couldn't do it on the cottage, the cottages site.
City council, in the course of the negotiations, decided that they wanted to pursue more housing. The beginning of it was the fact that the cottage aside had to be accommodated. The outcome of it was that they wanted to pursue more housing, hence the deal that's been developed and is on the table.
And that might be something that the developer can also address tonight, who I believe is in the audience, so.
I would caution the commission, though, as Commissioner Lottis noted, these, the packet and the materials are very dense. And so I would caution that the items that were specifically negotiated by the ad hoc committee that were, that was then put in the draft agreement that was sent, endorsed by the council and sent to the commission. I would caution you to spend much time reviewing those basic guidelines that the ad hoc committee had had already negotiated and developed. As, as community development director noted, the two-year gap was actually several meetings, which I'm sure the developers and and myself could tell you were a lot of meetings, actually. And and so over the course of all of those meetings, we had these fine-tuned discussions about exactly how many units could be supported at each site, how many units needed to be affordable at each site. So for the purposes of tonight, having the discussion of, you know, why exactly, you know, X many units were affordable at one site versus the other, I don't think is the the most effective use of of tonight's meeting, so.
Okay.
Okay, how, let me see, and the the development agreement will be in place for ten years. Do you have, but I, so you said something about, so we have the order of how the development will occur. Do we have specific years, like year one, year two, year three for these developments at all? Is that included?
Yeah, it's, it's identified as about a two-year, two-year span for each each phase, which then equates to about eight years, but then there's about a six-month gap between the, between each of those phases, which gets you to year ten.
Okay. And do we know, and is it in those, is it in the material anywhere? What are the current rents at cottages of flowers and how many residents are living there? Do we have anything that's documented in terms of the rent they're paying and or some kind of income per household?
Not within, not within the development agreement itself. That was a part of the negotiations early on in terms of identifying how many of those units were at an affordable rate and what sort of affordable rate those were at. That's, that's the number that you're seeing tonight as a part of the development agreement. And that was developed over the span of of gathering information from the developer in terms of those rents that were coming in. And that's where we've come up with the twenty plus the five, which is the twenty at moderate and the and the five at low. And that's, and by the way, that's spread.
Spread out.
That's spread. Yeah, if I.
The link on that.
The, the spread is through both Mallory and cottages in terms of how we came to the twenty-five. Doesn't have anything to do with World University site, which is one, one oh seven North Ventura or the, or the Montgomery site, which obviously, obviously vacant.
Okay, so so with both Mallory or with both cottages and Mallory, there were there is data somewhere documenting. Is there, are there any very low income households that are out there on these sites?
No.
Very low or low?
Nope, only, only the items that you're, you're seeing as a part of this development agreement, which was the twenty at moderate rate and the five at at low, not very low or extremely low.
Okay, and is there data for that? Is that, is that shown somewhere?
Not within the information that was provided for this, for this commission. That information was, was a part of and and what was the foundation for for how this development agreement was was crafted from the ground up, starting with the numbers and then working from there in terms of the the wording and the specific language.
Is it public information?
Uh, yeah, it is public information, absolutely.
The data is somewhere.
Yes, it is somewhere, just not, not built within this development agreement, no.
Okay, all right. Okay, so you're saying current residents on the cottages and Mallory Way only fall into the category of moderate, moderate or low, moderate or low, okay. As an aside, so are the categories of affordable housing the same as they were several years ago? Which normally was moderate, low, very low, I think, and I'm missing, extremely low. Is that still, are those still the categories that we work, work with?
So if you're asking me whether or not the categories have changed from the fifth cycle to the sixth cycle, the answer is yes. Those categories have changed. However, what's worth noting here is the moderate versus low has not changed in terms of the dynamics of how you address the median income versus moderate versus median income versus low. That has not changed. The very low and extremely low, those categories have been adjusted from what they were before.
Okay. If I could jump in very briefly, that we are still using the same state categories that you're thinking of Commissioner Lottis. Very low, low and moderate income translates back to low is eighty percent and moderate is one hundred and twenty percent of median income for the county as set by State Department Housing and Urban Development.
Okay, I'm, I may come back to that in just a minute. So so the cottages of the flowers has not been evaluated as a historic resource. Is that, is that true? I kind of got that from the staff report.
Has it, has it been evaluated as a historic resource? Yes, it was, there was a historic resources report that was done in two thousand and seven and then updated in two thousand and fifteen or fourteen as a part of the approval that went before planning commission in two thousand and sixteen. So yes, it has been evaluated and there are mitigation measures that address that as well in terms of photos that are going to be required as a part of the record and then submitted to the museum as well.
Okay.
The same thing is true with Mallory, if you, if I could just discuss that as well. The same thing is true and came out of the mitigation measures for the E I R. And that was in two thousand and five and then addressed again in two thousand and twelve. Similar mitigation came from that as well in terms of photographing each of those individual units that are to be demoed and the records then to be stored and provided to the museum.
So on the cottages among the flowers, the, in the development agreement, they're keeping, they've agreed, the applicant has agreed to keep ten units as market rate rentals for ten years. And so after ten years, they could sell them, is that it?
Yes, because it is a part of a track map, so that track map has each of those individual units on their own plot of land.
Okay, and that's, that's still valid and that's, well, I guess that was what we gave the extension on, but does the, so the development agreement extends the track map approval.
Yeah, the track map was actually recorded, so it, it's. Yeah, there is no, there's no time sensitivity, that one.
Okay. Okay, and on the world, so phase two on the World University site. So how did it happen that the site got converted to office space under P L zoning?
In terms of of the use itself being, being used and potentially occupied.
P L zoning does not allow offices other than government offices.
Right, and that was, that was noted, however, it's been identified within the staff report as as office, which is really kind of the, the reason why they're looking at and certainly considering the, the change in use. Obviously, the zone change and the general plan amendment are required with that as well.
Okay, but, but, but stuff happened and it never got planning commission review, it never got design review, it never got review of an illegal use in the P L zone. So what happened with that?
Let me jump in on that one briefly if I could. There is no illegal land use at World University because it was built out as offices, but it is not being used as offices. There's a difference between how something is built and how it is operated, how it is used. World University is not currently an illegal land use. Their proposal is to amend the zoning, allow for the residential use that they're considering. As for how it was built as offices, it could have gone back to a school. I think that was one of their original intents. Obviously, economics has failed that. And I'll ask the director to speak a little bit further to the, the past review there. When that was approved, it did go to the planning commission back in oh, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. I'll ask the director to confirm the dates.
I think that was actually seventeen when it went forward. Sorry, the dates are a little jumbled here with the four sites. And during that time, they were actually looking at modifications to some of the office uses as a part of the World University, as a universe, as a online university. And I want to say that was late two thousand and seventeen.
Okay, well, I just, I just would like to point out that P L zoning only allows government offices. It does allow universities.
Yeah, duly.
That was, that was defunct at that point after, when they made the change over to office uses.
Duly noted.
So and there, so there's a, could you, could you reiterate the density bonus on this site? So how, what, how many units will be allowed as part of the density bonus?
So if you do do the straight numbers for, for the change in zone to V M U, you're looking at, at a little over five units, but you end up saying, identifying five units. With the density bonus here, in combination with the, with the draft ordinance, they're looking at a den, at a density of up to ten units. So they would have ten units at, and the units themselves are ranging in size from about six hundred square feet up to a little less than eleven hundred square feet in size, most of which, if not all, with the exception of either one or two of those units are efficiency units, meaning that those efficiency units don't have a designated bedroom. And both the living and the bedroom are accommodated within one space.
I didn't see any kind of density, D U per, density unit per acre figures on any of these sites. I don't know if you could provide that.
Yeah, the V M U, I believe, is fifty-five hundred square feet per, per unit for V M U. And I believe within the R two, which is where cottages amongst the flowers, as well as Mallory is located at, that's about five thousand a unit. Five thousand square feet.
Don't, don't we do units per acre, though, also?
It's five thousand square feet per, per unit, not units per acre. So if, if you want to break it down that way, if I, if you break it down that way, Mallory Way is thirty-one units. In terms of the size.
Mallory is thirty-one units per acre.
Cottages would be ten.
Oh, but they're not, but they're only doing fifty, oh. So they're doing. Are you giving me the maximum allowed?
I'm giving you the amount that, yeah, I'm giving you the maximum allowed for each of those.
Okay, but can you give me what they're providing?
World University would be five.
Five units per acre?
And uh, no, it would be ten units per acre. That, that site, hey, hold on. You're jumbling things up here. World University, in terms of that site, is point six acres in size. That's where you're getting the five acres or the five units.
Okay, that allows the five units, and so we're doubling what the density.
Correct.
Would be otherwise allowed, but the density bonus is, is something that's provided for in our city ordinance and it's required by state law, so I get that, okay. How about the other? I mean, I'm, I'm just accustomed to thinking of density in units per acre, so.
Yeah, the, our code does it per square, it's square footage.
That's.
But then you end up, you end up working it backwards in terms of the size of the site. And that's how, that's how you draw the number of units. Montgomery is, is in that same boat. It's about five units on that site and it's about, it's a little over half an acre in size. So they're looking for a density bonus that gets them to fifteen units.
Okay, so they're, they're starting with five units that they would otherwise, otherwise be allowed by, what's the zoning on that? V M U.
Correct.
And they're getting ten density bonus units. Okay. Okay, and what are the cottages getting? If you can kind of put it in that same language.
Yeah, so the. Yeah, so the cottages is one point five, five acres, I want to say, in size. And that one is actually ten units. They're allowed to have ten. They're, they were approved in two thousand and sixteen for ten.
Okay. And one and a half like this. Okay, all right. And, let's see here. And the, the Mallory Way, that's, oh, that's, say that one again.
Mallory Way is, is up to thirty-one units, but they're proposing and were approved in two thousand and twelve by city council for thirty units.
Okay. Okay, and and so on South Montgomery, the units, are they going to be rental or for purchase?
Wait, say that again?
Wasn't clear. Are the units on South Montgomery going to be rental or for purchase? It's not clear in the staff report.
Rental.
And with the time, ten-year time limit?
Uh, not, not for South Montgomery. That ti, ten-year time limit is only for cottages.
So.
The time limit for the, for affordability is fifty-five years for the affordable units on Montgomery. That's all of it because that's an entirely affordable project.
Right, through the affordable housing. Right, thank you.
Okay, so, all right, I'm, okay, so how many, we're doing on Montgomery, we're doing fifteen units. And I did read the staff report, but I can't remember. So how many of the fifteen will be deed restricted for affordability?
All fifteen.
Okay. I did know this at one time and now I'm getting, I'm getting more confused. But you're helping. Okay, so fifteen dwelling units on South Montgomery will be deed restricted for fifty-five years. For affordable rent.
Correct.
Correct?
Moderate to low.
Okay, and in terms of the, let me make sure I have Mallory Way here. So the staff report on Mallory Way, it talks about the history. I get it. I, council denied the project September twenty-ten, planning commissioner viewed a revised project February twenty-twelve. Did that, did planning commission approve it?
You're talking about the, the process? Yeah, so the recommendation by a planning commission at that point was to, to move forward with the project and city council ended up, ended up.
Didn't the city council approve that project? Because that was not in the staff report either.
Yeah, that was part of the resolution that, that was a part of the attachments.
Well, twelve, three, three.
Yeah, I can't remember the exact, but I know it was twenty-twelve.
Twenty-twelve, okay. Oh, you did say that, okay. Okay, and there was something in the, some comments, were the additional mitigations included in the historic preservation report? Included in the conditions of approval on this development agreement? There was, there was a comment, I think that that there were additional mitigations that were discussed that are not included in this development, development agreement. Is that the case?
No, I haven't gone back and looked at the record to see what mitigation could have been added that was a part of the discussion. I just know that what ended up landing within the resolution has been included within the draft ordinance as a part of those additional mitigation or mitigation that's carrying forward for both of those projects. And it does include cultural resources, which is the, which is a part of that historic resources report for both of those sites. Both of those sites, meaning Mallory, four twelve, Mallory Way, as well as three twelve West Elisa, which is cottages amongst the flowers.
Has, has staff personally checked the mitigations that were, there was an EIR on this project, correct? That would have, that did include the historic resources report. Has staff personally looked at the mitigations in the EIR to see what they were and?
I love that you asked that question because I looked at it personally just recently because I wanted to see how many mitigation measures were for the EIR as well as for the MND. So for the, for the MND, there were, there were twelve mitigation measures and for the EIR, there were, there were again twelve mitigation measures that were identified for both, for both the MND, for cottages among the flowers and for Mallory Way as a part of their EIR.
Okay. And any and all mitigations that were related to historic resource mitigation have been brought forward?
And they are included as part of this, absolutely.
Okay. Okay. Okay, back to the affordable housing. In the staff report, you do, you have it on page seven of nine, it starts at the bottom. And you, you reference methodology, the housing and community development, which is a state agency, is you, has, is using to update state income limits. So I didn't really, I don't know what the, I don't know what the implications of that are. Is that what is changing the current chart that we have and the code referencing affordable or low income, so in the ordinance, we have affordable rent. Is, is that being, this is what you're talking about, it's being changed?
Yeah, so the affordable rent, and I know the city attorney can jump in here as well, but the affordable rent is already built into our code. And I want to say it's article nine of our code that addresses affordable units and how you address those, those units if those units are being taken offline. If those units are being taken offline, you've got to address how you're accommodating those units. And if they're on the same site, then that's, that's the solution. In this case, this developer through the development agreement has identified additional sites to address those, those units that are coming offline.
That, that's correct. The, the Ojai municipal code, I think it's section ten, two point nine oh four requires an equal number or greater number of units. And then the, the actual area median income numbers are the twenty, twenty-two numbers from Ventura County, which is the city attorney mentioned earlier, roughly correlate, I think, very, was it, this is the eighty percent, one hundred and twenty percent numbers we were discussing earlier. And we, we can pull those up also if that would be helpful.
So why, why are there, can you tell me again, why there are no very low or extremely low units being talked about? I mean, really, the housing element that we just reviewed kind of highlighted the need in this, in the Ojai community for very low and extremely low units. I mean, we're talking school teachers, people that work in the stores, the restaurants downtown. Probably police and fire at entry levels at least. So you know, we're talking about working, working people. I, I just, I'm not sure why we're avoiding that. Can you, can you just talk about that a little bit?
I think it gets back to what Mr. Vega had mentioned earlier, which is the parameters of, and the envelope of the development agreement that you're seeing here tonight is for review. In terms of the history on how those units came about, in terms of the twenty versus the five for the twenty-five, those are a part of the, the loss of units. It's not identifying that through that negotiation, suddenly there are extremely low or very low units that are coming online. It's, it's a, it's a like-for-like scenario in terms of what we're looking at here. And just as a sidebar to, to that, to this discussion, typically with your extremely low, you've, you've got your overlay housing accommodations, which I know we talked about almost a year ago, actually. Two or three meetings with this, with this body and then city council for approval for the housing element update. And within that, there are already pre-existing extremely low units and those are thirteen in total of the fifty-three that we've got accounted for here as a part of our arena within this sixth cycle. Those units more than likely are going to be accommodated through some sort of overlay affordable housing project. Typically, they just don't pencil out, to be quite honest, in terms of how you address it just on a apples-to-apples scenario, which is, and I don't want to, I'm getting off tangent here, but, which is really the, the reason why we're looking at an apples-to-apples scenario here with this, with this.
You're saying extremely low or very low is in the future. It's not happening with this project.
Correct.
It can happen with the future. And, you know, just as an aside, communities, and I've talked to Lucas a little bit about this, communities like Mammoth, Mammoth Lakes has found grant money, significant money to bring into the community to create a pretty impressive worker housing. And I, I would really like this, I mean, I just think there's opportunity out there, but I, I understand what you're saying, but so it's, we're just replacing like-for-like with this project and that's, that's it. So, okay. That's all my, that's all my questions for now.
We can come back to you, Commissioner Lottis, if, if you have some more.
Thanks.
I'll, I'll kick it over to Commissioner Bennett and then I have some additional questions too we can throw in there, but Commissioner Bennett, did you have any, any clarifying questions for staff?
Yeah, actually, the comments just made were very helpful in terms of clarifying some of these issues and why we have gone to where we have gone. I, you know, these are observations and questions about, about, so if I make an observation without a question, if you'd excuse me, I'd appreciate it. Let me, let me just start with a global question of water conservation in the project on all four sites. What's, what's been done about, about water conservation on these, on these properties? I mean, I know that sort of new versus old, implicit in it is, is conservation. You replace an old building with a new building and the new building has toilets that use less water and sinks that use less water and appliances that use less water. But what's, what's going on proactively by the developer on the question of water conservation? Because that was identified in one of the, in one of the first questions. And then I'll, I'll, I'll go from that with other questions. And doesn't have to be long and drawn out, but I'm just curious.
I'll, I'll keep it short and sweet. Two things. One is the engineering assessment report that I had identified in the very beginning is really keyed in on two sites. One is Mallory Way and the other is cottages. Those two are butted up against each other. That engineering assessment more than likely is going to identify solutions to retain water on-site versus having water diverted off-site as quickly as possible. And obviously, there's some technicalities that come along with this and I'm not an engineer and I don't know the math. But clearly, there's ways in which water can be remained and, and remain on-site. Obviously, we don't get a lot of rain here, but we certainly water things and that water, a lot of times, tends to want to try to come off-site. Finding solutions to that is one, is one way. I'll also have the developer speak to some of the fixture pieces and other, I would say probably low-hanging fruit that helps to address some of that water conservation piece as well. Fixtures, meaning fixtures within each of those units.
True. One additional point, if I could direct your attention, Commissioner Bennett, in section nine point nine of the development agreement, that's what bakes in that engineering assessment report and includes removal of a prior condition of approval that called for a significant concrete storm drain pipe to ship water into the sewer system and replaces it with a to-be engineered, a to-be engineered stormwater capture and recharge system. Which would put significant amounts of water back into the system, back into the ecosystem.
You bet. And, and, and the former solution was an old-style solution and that's that the water out there as fast as you can. And the other one is allow it to perk down into the, into the water table and then you can draw upon it later for other uses in the community. Okay, but I'll, I'll be looking forward to the other conversation. Observation and I, and I don't know, and this is me being somewhat naive to this process. You know, I don't know how the prices estimated by the developer are developed, whether they are based upon developer cost or whether they're developed by market value for the moderate and low income and, and then obviously the even lower amounts, but I'm making a presumption that what we're seeing in the Montgomery process, which is where we're solving a lot of this sort of catch-up on, on moderate and low-income housing. Those, the, the units there are actually very small. And I realize we don't really have fully developed plans for those, but we certainly have a sketch of how, sort of how it all works. And, and I'm just, I'm frankly concerned about trying to get anything smaller than that. I'm actually concerned about that size because, you know, they've got a set, well, they've got a separate bathroom and an area for a kitchen. It's a sort of great room concept and great is, is sort of a, almost ironic term here because it's, it's where you sleep, it's where you live, it's where you eat. And it's tiny. There's, 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 none of the drawings there would show beds in them. They're all, they show low seats or small sofas and, and I'm presuming that these are either Murphy beds in the wall or sofa beds that get pulled out, but it's pretty small as it is and the idea of trying to accommodate even smaller units than that. And this is really a question to staff, is what's our obligation vis-a-vis getting down to the unit sizes that Commissioner Lottis was talking about, which are smaller than low income? What's our obligation as a community to, to provide additional things at that price? I, I understand the need, the practical need of the community to have workforce housing for teachers and restaurants and things like that, but I've got to believe that the teachers and the little working restaurants earn enough to qualify for the low-income and moderate-income affordable housing that we are looking at here, which as I say, looks, looks pretty short in terms of the amenities and, and what I would think that a certified teacher or nurse or someone would want to live in based upon the square footage and the ability to accommodate both separately, not maybe a bedroom, but a bed and a, and a sofa in the, in the quote great room or the central room in the dwelling.
Commissioner Bennett, was there a question in there?
Yeah.
Was it, was it a?
I think, I think it was.
I know, it sounded like a long rambling rant.
Yeah, it's okay. Commissioner Bennett, if, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll try to summarize. I think I got it. I think he's asking about the replacement of low-income housing with low-income housing, if, if that, if those numbers match. housing, if, if that, if those numbers match.
Yeah, so those numbers match, but if you're asking me if the square footages match, the code doesn't specify square footages. It specifies unit count.
Right. Okay. Is that, is that fair, Commissioner Bennett? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, yeah, I guess, I guess that's it, but also Commissioner Lottis was talking about things which are categorized at even smaller than low income, um, you know, and I forget the, the terminology she used. It wasn't ultra-low income, but it's, um, there were two categories of even smaller than that, and I thought what we were looking at here were moderate and low income.
Is there something lower than low income?
Yes, there's very low and, and extremely low.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we don't have any examples of that in this process, and I presume that we have no obligation to, in the housing element or any other place to provide, um, that.
We, we could have, we, let me just jump in there real quick. We have an obligation to zone for, uh, enough areas that we expect will create the opportunity over the next eight years for a certain amount of very low-income units. Um, but we aren't expecting this project to accommodate the very low-income need. Instead, this is the, the moderate and the low-income need.
Right.
And that in part reflects the like-for-like element, as the director described.
Got it. Okay. Commissioner Bennett, any additional questions?
Yeah, um, uh, how could we, and this is a guess, a question for the developer, how could you add square footage to the Montgomery project where there doesn't appear to be room for both a bed and a sofa in the unit? I mean, to have both, and, um, I, you know, I don't know, it's a two-story development, but I'm just wondering. And, um, um, can, can you add any units to that or any of the other, um, developments that we're look, looking at? Um, and then countervailing that, um, the historic content on Mallory, um, as I believe we have only five or six units on Mallory, which are attempting to satisfy the, um, the idea of keeping some, um, reference in those projects to the, the historical, um, urisprung of those, uh, of those developments. And can, is there any way to, to do more of that physically? Is it, are those buildings, I mean, they look like they're about to fall down. Um, and does it make any sense whatsoever to, to try and restore any more of those, either, you know, as a way in which we could satisfy some of this, um, very low-income need, or for that matter, the historical desire to create some semblance of a village that once existed there, um, in the new, in the new project?
And, and maybe that's a, a better question for the developer?
Yeah, and I'll, I just, yeah, I'd punt that to probably the developer, but I want to just address two things. One is, um, to Commissioner Bennett's point in terms of the number of units for Mallory Way, it's seven, six at moderate, one at low, in terms of the, the number count on Mallory Way. And then in terms of, uh, the process for the Montgomery site, um, and it's built into the development agreement, that design review would be coming back to this commission in terms of the site and elevations, design.
Okay.
Density, however, would be set with the development agreement.
Got it.
I know I had mentioned that early in presentation, but I think it's worth noting and reminding the commission and the community, uh, listening here and here as well.
Okay. Um, okay, I, I had a, a couple, a couple clarifying questions. Um, one of my, my favorite topics, parking. Um, I know this is going to be an additional, uh, 32 units for, for Ojai. Um, obviously, that's going to bring in additional parking. Um, are we making any concessions with these projects on the number of, of parking provided for each of these, each of these spots?
Excellent question. So if I, if I identify each one of them individually, and the two that are, have already gone through the, um, through the, through the review process, Mallory Way has a, a requirement for 76 parking spaces onsite. In 2012, um, the city council allowed for a reduction down to, I want to say, either 68 or 69, um, parking spaces.
All right.
Uh, then you go to, and that's per our, that's per our code, that's per, per the local standards that we have here, and I, I'm saying that because I'm going to mention something here in, in two projects. The next one is cottages among the flowers. That one has, I want to say, 30 parking spaces onsite, and they're accommodating all parking onsite.
Right.
Um, and that's, both of them have kind of a, a mixture of, of, um, covered garage and just open parking spaces, accommodating, obviously, for the individuals that are going to be residing there as well as guests.
Right. So they'll actually have more parking than what's required?
No, they have the parking that they have, uh, cottages has the parking that's required, so they're not going over or providing an additional amount. That's per, per our code.
Okay.
Then you have, um, World University, which has 13 parking spaces onsite. Um, all of those units, if you, if you've been keeping count, are, um, efficiencies. When you apply affordable housing to those sites, you are then, by state law, allowed to apply the state law standards in terms of parking. That's why I'm mentioning the first two.
Actually, they told you, this is by rental, $95 an hour.
Oh, can you mute?
This room?
The, the first two.
Yeah, no, like now, because we need to do that.
Commissioner Bennett, you might want to mute your microphone there. Looks like somebody walked in your office.
I'm in the business center in a hotel, and he just announced, "95 dollars an hour." Okay, uh, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll, I'll...
Yeah, if you could mute, that would be...
I'll mute it, I'll, I'll, I'll dial back in.
Oh, you don't have to dial back in? Okay.
Wait, actually, that is a problem. Our quorum is three, so let's take a...
Let's take a break, because I think he's got to get logged back in.
Yeah, let's take a, a, a five or five-minute recess and staff can...
So pause, I was talking about...
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Gotcha, okay, cool. Yeah, do you have his cell phone number?
Yeah, I, I would say, Lucas, give him a call and let him know, A, we've lost quorum, and B, he, he can call in, it doesn't have to be on the audio, if he can, if he can find a quiet space to call.
Uh, 95, he's going to get charged $95 an hour? 75, did he say $75 an hour? $95 an hour? Oh, wow.
That sounds like...
He's at a, he's at a hotel in the business center, I guess, he said. I don't know where he is.
Hopefully, he's traveling.
Yeah, 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 I know, it's his birthday, so it should be, yeah, it should be fun. Yeah. Interesting. Oh, he's in New York. Okay.
And in the meantime, I'll ask if, uh, James, can you mute, Han, can you mute the mics for everybody?
Barely.
Yeah.
You're weird. I'm going to call you back. You sound like a...
You got any ears?
Yeah.
You've got to build it up.
Yeah, sure.
That's the reality of this issue.
Yeah.
Well, cottages, they're ready. It's short.
I'm like, listen to this, but, but this is like a wearing...
For that site? For those sites? I doubt it's for that site.
Did you have a card?
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, I'm staying, there he is. I think that's probably the... I keep saying that, 2016 approved by Plan Commission, 2012 city council. It does. It really does.
Lucas, turn off your microphone.
No, no, no. Uh, we'll, we'll get him back in. Yeah, we'll keep it good. Yeah.
And we could do a phone, we could do him by phone if we need to.
Right. Whatever works for him.
Yeah.
He would just say, "Good heavens, he would have that." No, we don't. This is not necessary to go tonight.
Yeah.
But have to continue would be awful.
I know, especially we got a decent turnout.
Yeah, let's get him on the phone. And you could tell him the phone is okay, too.
Why do they have to go in?
No, no. Thank you.
We see you, Jamie. All right. All right, should we, uh, bring it back?
Yeah. Let's make sure Jamie's back. Are you back, Jamie?
I am.
All right, if you, if you need to go to a phone and you've got limited access to the virtual por, portion, Jamie, let me know, or let us know.
No, this is fine.
Are you all squared away?
There she is. Commissioner Lottis, you good to go?
Uh, yes, I am.
All right, are we done with our five minutes?
I think so.
All right.
I'm, I'm sorry, folks, too.
All right, we're, we're back. Um, we will, uh, we'll continue with the parking question?
Yeah, so I got about halfway through that parking question, and I was just about to start talking about World University. So World University has 13 parking spaces onsite currently. Um, as you had seen and I, I talked about earlier, there are, um, a number, if not the majority, of the, of the, um, units that are there are considered efficiency. We use, because there's affordable, because this is an affordable project, we use the affordable, um, parking standards through the state, which then identify if it's an efficiency, you're looking at one unit or one parking space for each unit.
Got it.
So it's a significantly reduced, um, parking demand, um, in, in favor of affordable housing. The same thing is true for, um, the Montgomery site, because, well, it's an affordable housing project, this is, includes affordable housing, um, units. It's a one-unit, one parking space. Um, each of those units are right around 450 square feet, I think, in size, so they're already efficiency by design. I mean, to Commissioner Bennett's point earlier, um, being of that size, you've got what you would call a great room, essentially, where you've got the living room, bedroom, um, kitchen all kind of hit, living within one space. Obviously, the, the restroom, the bathroom itself is separate.
Got it. Okay.
So that's, that's what you're seeing. So that's, again, using the state standard, um, versus our local standard.
Got it. Okay. So we will have, uh, additional units, we'll have additional parking, we don't necessarily have parking for all of the units because of the state code.
Well, per state code, yes, we would, but if we, for instance, if it was just, correct, if we were just using, if this was coming in at 15 units and we weren't looking at affordable housing, we would obviously be throwing, um, the local standards, which are considerably more than what we're looking at here. You're probably looking at maybe two and a half, um, two and a half spaces typically for, for units, although with an efficiency, it may actually be less, so you may actually end up, I didn't do the numbers for either one of those sites, but it'd be, it would certainly be more.
Okay.
Parking spaces, but we're using the state standards because of the affordable housing project.
And we have about 10 years to assimilate these, uh, these additional units and additional cars. Um, so are we, hopefully, we've got a, a traffic study in the works that we're looking at?
So there were already traffic studies done for the first two projects. Um, with these other two, uh, the traffic studies actually aren't required, and the reason why is because when you're looking at our AQP4 model, affordable housing, um, is basically exempt, and that's what we have here.
Got it. Cool. Okay, so on the, the world property, the World University property, that's going to be next to the hotel.
Just to the west, yeah, across the street.
So we're looking at a pretty, we're looking at pretty dense section there with pretty high demand for parking. So, yeah, that's going to be interesting. Um, okay. So, um, also, another question, obviously, this is going to be, um, a 10-year overall project. Was there, uh, any, um, reason why Cottage was considered first? I mean, I guess that's more for the developer, I should ask that.
I, yeah, it may be for the developer, I'll just put a, a 20-second plug-in that that project is literally shovel-ready.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. And also, you mentioned that, um, it took about two years or so for the, or three years for the, the special, uh, unit to get together and discuss the overall development plan. Um, is it, uh, can we, how many people were, uh, part of that committee?
So the ad hoc consisted of two council members, which were identified, um, during that May 14th.
Okay.
Um, meeting with, with city council, and that included both council member Wirick and council member Lottis.
Got it. And was there any additional, was there public folks on there?
No.
No public, okay.
No.
All right. Okay.
And that's on the city side, then obviously, we had, we had the developers that were...
Correct.
Discussing and negotiating as well.
So the city plus the developers. We didn't have any public comment on, on that. Okay. All right, um, well, I, I think that's it for, for my questions. I, mine were more global in nature. Um, I'm sure we'll have some additional questions coming out, but, uh, you know, in the sake of moving forward, because we're, we're kind of already, you know, about an hour, hour and a half in, um, we'll, we'll kick it over to the developers for any questions.
Well, we could do at this point, just to, to help you on here, we could open it up for public comment at this point, and then by opening up for public comment, allow for the developer to come up and, and speak first, but then you also got speaker cards as well.
Yeah, we've got quite a few speaker cards, so did you want to, we'll open it up for public comment first and then do speaker cards?
Yeah, within the public comment, uh, realm, um, having the developer speak within that, that format, I think is appropriate.
Okay. All right. So we'll open up for public comment, and, um, would you want to bring on the speakers?
Yeah, if you, well, no, you're, you're doing this because you're the right chair.
I just...
But if we could have, uh, the developer just say a few words...
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
And for the record, please state your name and...
Good evening, um, planning commissioners and city manager, city attorney, uh, the community development director and staff. Uh, I'm Jeff Becker with the Becker Group, representing, uh, the Johnker and Becker families. on three of the sites and then, uh, in our ownership interest called the Bungalows. And then the Logue family, um, which operates under Greenhawk LLC, related to the, um, former World University, which also was the prior city hall. So, we've been working on these projects for pretty much half my life and, um, or at least half, sharing my life. Seen each other a lot, so. And more recently, the last couple of years, trying to put together a development agreement that works for all the parties involved. So, we've, you know, each side has its own little life and, uh, story. So, it's not, it's cobbled together here as a whole, but the reality is each one of them has specific detailed, uh, development issues that had to be addressed. And I'm happy to answer any questions related to each one of them. With, of course, I wanna say the exception of Montgomery, because that was just a conceptual to try to figure out, uh, a rough calculation on what could be accomplished. And so, that obviously would be coming back to you guys at some point if we move forward, uh, to go through the details and get that one nailed down. So, uh, happy to answer any questions and comment on.
Okay.
On.
Two, two things that I know came up during, and I kinda punted them to, to Jeff. And that is, uh, water conservation would be the first one in terms of, uh, probably fixtures or something along those lines in terms of how you're gonna address that. And then the second is unit size for Montgomery. I know it's four hundred and fifty square feet. How did that come about? I mean, I know it's conceptual at this point, uh, but the, the number isn't. That's what's part of the development agreement, but, um, the unit size is what I'm kinda curious, curious about. I think that's actually what Commissioner Bennett had asked about.
Yeah, I think so.
Sure. No problem. Um, first on the water, uh, any of our project plans are gonna have to comply with current building code requirements and water usage. We have existing water usage at a couple of these sites already and had prior historical water usage. But, uh, any of the new, um, installations would include a whole, whole, you know, smattering of different, low-flow, um, uh, infrastructure and, um, possibly gray water as well, depending on how the city vets that and what their position is on it. So, and of course, the storm drain. One of the issues and the reason that the cottages was actually started first was because the cottages in Mallory Way are, um, adjacent to each other and there was some pretty major storm drain work that the county required be done. And so, then we got into this recharge conversation, which, you know, there's varying opinions even on that. So, you know, one, one entity is telling us to do one thing, uh, another entity is telling us to do something else. So, these are all things that will need to be vetted out. So, on the, uh, issue of unit size, we were trying to come up. We had, uh, Steve Foster of Cornerstone and his crew come up with a conceptual with these size units. I will tell you that we've built these size units, we own these size units in Ventura. Hundred percent occupied, some of them are affordable. So, yeah, easily can be done. We have units that are actually three hundred and twenty square feet. And they have all of today's modern conveniences in there and there's a waiting list to get into them. So, what they will ultimately be, uh, square footage-wise is really yet to be determined. We're trying to make it work along with your parking question, which, which was also one of the issues with the city hall, by the way. We only had twelve plus a handicap parking space. We're trying to figure out what do we do with that building. We, at one point, were thinking it'd be converted to an office use. We, you know, when we bought it, we bought it, the client bought it through the World University. So, all we did was shell it out and clean it up. So, it's been sitting there idle since we acquired it. But one of the reasons we got to the, um, the use that is before you guys is, uh, it made sense, actually, based on the parking that we have.
Right.
Without going out and finding a, a whole nother parking lot.
Right. And, and are you guys able to, uh, limit the, uh, number of individuals living in, uh, a unit? Or is that something that's up to the individual?
Not really. I mean, not by state mandate.
Okay.
You're very limited. So, it's more of a size-driven.
Right.
Issue.
So, you could have a, you know, you could have a, a couple in one of those.
Yeah, you could have a couple with a kid.
I got you. All right. Cool. Commissioner Lottis, any, any questions for the developer?
Uh, well, let's see. Um, maybe, maybe you could talk about why, I, I'm, I didn't hear any rationale, really, for why we couldn't do the affordable units on the, um, cottages site.
Uh, on the cottages itself, well, there's a couple of issues. One, the, the, uh, creek goes through there. And, uh, inclusive of the creek, we have a lot of trees. We've got a ton of trees there. So, it, it was pretty difficult to even fit what's in there now on the current plan onsite. I guess you could potentially go up, but I'm not sure that the neighbors would be all that thrilled with that. So, you know, it's a confined situation along with your existing trees and the creek. Uh, that's one of the issues there is you've got, you know, you've got kind of a creek that's dry now, obviously, because of our rain situation. But when it's rain, when it rains, it's pretty, it can get a little bit intense. So, it's just a tight site. And actually, the plans that were literally ready to be picked up before somebody appealed it from the council end, we have, uh, a pretty substantial number of trees that are actually being added that, which are per code, required per code. So, there's just limited space there. I mean, it sounds great having an acre and a half, but when you start putting units in, it's, it gets gobbled up quick. Uh, Mallory Way is really the same kinda situation as well, because that creek continues through there. So, uh, you know, neither one of these sites are just, you know, flat sites. I mean, that's the nature of it and that's the, that's the, uh, the beauty of it.
Yeah, and I noticed with Cottage, um, currently, there's a, there's a path that runs through there. Uh, so, there's limited parking. So, you're gonna allow that, open that up for parking space? So, there's not necessarily gonna be that path that runs through, is that correct? But you'll still have a walking path that connects.
Yeah, the path will connect from, um, Aliso on up to Mallory.
Got it. Okay. Okay. All right.
And that, and that path is actually a trail. I mean, it's, it's a trail that currently exists. I mean, Jeff and I actually walked it just to get a sense. It's, it's kind of a cool space to walk through. You've kinda feel like you're lost in the jungle until you come out and there you are. You're, you're, you're on a eucalyptus suddenly, right? So, it's, and that's a part of the development agreement as well. And that's actually something that was identified within the plans as a part of this atta, the attachment for the development agreement too. Just, just to clarify.
And, and with Cottage, is there, there's currently, are there currently units that are, um, damaged with water, et cetera, that need to be repaired anyway?
With the cottages specifically, the first phase of the cottages, we actually emptied out two units plus the garage structure, uh, because our permits were at hand. You know, we had major, you know, pre-construction work going on, which also includes Edison.
Right.
And, um, um, paid our school fees, was bringing a check to the city and then the project got appealed. So, we still have two units that have been sitting there for three years plus.
Wow. Okay.
Idle, plus the garage structure, which has gotta be rebuilt. I mean, it's, it's had a great run, but it's, you know, those.
Yeah.
Structures are old.
Yeah, they're old. Yeah. And, and do you know when those structures were originally built?
The thirties.
The thirties. Oh, wow.
Give or take.
Yeah. Uh, Commissioner Lottis, any additional questions for the developer?
Um, not at this time, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Bennett?
Um, I just have one and that is, it's a question staging. And you're, and you're saying that part of this is sort of happenstance and what you have, the shovel-ready. But, um, in trying to think of how we could accommodate people who are in one phase, um, let's say phase two, we could accommodate them with things that were done in phase one. So, we move them out and then work on phase two. What, what have you done or thought about in terms of all that? So, that the people are, who are moved, are moved from one property in this development to another property in the development?
You know, I don't wanna sound difficult, but obviously, what we've been doing is trying to get to this meeting and get the project approved. Because until we get that done, we spent a ton of money, uh, processing the cottages to a building. And I'm sure a few people in the room have done construction. It's a, it's a long haul processing anything. So, um, our focus has really been trying to get the project and projects organized so we can move forward. So, um, as far as moving people out or anything, um, we haven't really gotten to that point yet. We're not there yet. I mean, that's the bottom line. So, it's not an easy process. It's an expensive process, getting more expensive. And, uh, we need to get you guys' approval so we can start that. So, uh, the cottages was ready to have the building permit pulled. You know, we, um, emptied two of the units plus the garage and sitting there. So, that's what we're gonna initially start on. And we'll probably move forward with building plans very quickly on the city hall, uh, because that's sitting idle and it has been sitting idle for three years also. So, that, that could go somewhat concurrently. The staff asked us for rough timing on all the projects, but that's, and really what we gave was rough timing. You know, once you get going, you go as fast as you can, because you need to. But the reality is, is we gotta get building permits out of you guys. So, we're ready for that part.
Vice Chair, could I ask?
Yeah.
A follow-up question.
Mm-hmm.
I know I've asked you this question, but I don't think the community is aware of it. What's the timing for the construction of, of each of these phases in terms of how you're seeing it?
You know, it's typically eighteen to twenty-four months, just as an average. I know you two, I, we've done a number of projects in Ventura. By the way, most of the projects we work on are historical in nature. We're just finishing the Elks Lodge right now into a hotel. But the reality is to get everything lined up with Edison, you know, all of your infrastructure. It's, it's an eighteen to twenty-month, twenty-four month deal. And, you know, maybe the second project can start midway going through that process too. We'll wanna get it done as fast as we can, but, you know, it just takes time.
Right. And, and I noticed, uh, with the, um, Mallory Way property, the eucalyptus will open up. Will that be, that'll be a through street?
Yes.
So, eucalyptus, okay. So, instead of the, the T at Mallory.
Cognotta on the other side.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, that project, uh, and those plans there, I don't know, we had maybe fifteen meetings, twenty meetings on just those.
Yeah. Yeah.
Including those road access points.
Well, you're, because you've got two, you've got buildings that are blocking the roadway now, correct? So, you're gonna have to remove those.
There's a garage structure.
Yeah.
On the, on the east side.
And then on the, on Summer Street, um, I noticed you'll open up access to that as well. That's currently, uh, you know, like a.
You know, there's a fence there now.
Oh, there's a fence there now?
Yeah.
And does it have enough room for cars to get through or is, is some of the properties will have to be removed?
Um, there's, there's an access point there now.
There is. Okay.
Some of the units that we're saving that will be re-restored are on that end.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. All right, well, that's it for, for me. Uh, anything else for commissioners? Any other additional questions? We're good? Okay, we can, uh, bring in public comment?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, first up, we have, uh, Mr. Wirick, Mr. Bill Wirick. And we'll do, uh, we'll do three minutes, because we got quite a few to get through. If that's all right.
Thank you. I, um, thought it was good for me to appear, because I am one of the parties that the council asked to, uh, negotiate. And I thought I'd like to, um, just give a little, uh, context and, uh, goals that we felt we were given by council. Number one, the practice for years had been to renew older entitlements, even when, after they had expired and even if they were no longer, uh, have been formulated according to contemporary standards. So, when this, um, entitlement came up for, uh, renewal and the planning commission was, uh, it was recommended by a former planning director, uh, to renew it, the entire city council took issue with, uh, this wasn't one, I mean, I was one of the people raising the issue, but it was ultimately agreed to by everyone, that it wasn't appropriate to just roll over an entitlement according to, uh, past standards in the current environment, particularly with the new adoption of the housing element and associated ordinances with respect to affordable housing stock. So, uh, we felt that to simply renew these entitlements that were already in place was inconsistent with both our newly adopted, uh, housing element and the existing ordinances. And it was important to find out what we could do to contribute to affordable housing with a major constraint, namely, not have outside subsidy. In other words, without exterior, uh, external, uh, taxpayer subsidy, what could we do in terms of, uh, our affordable housing stock in a way that was compatible with OHI? And given the fact that there were existing entitlements in place that though expired, uh, for example, the, uh, the adoption of the track mat was nevertheless, nevertheless recorded. So, we had these that had to be honored, because it had been recorded. So, we have these constraints and we, and I think what council was wanting to do was to say, hey, planning commission, we're going to appeal as a overall council, the recommendation you had from a previous planning director to just simply extend this entitlement, because we can do better. We need to apply current standards, but we need to still operate within the constraints, uh, that we were presented with. And so, our goal was to simply, you know, how do we arrange, how do we handle a development agreement that contributes significantly? Actually, this might end up being if we, uh, as it's currently constituted, the largest contribution to affordable housing since Whispering Oaks. Uh, how can we do this but do it in a way that is, um, achievable within the current set of entitlements and track maps, et cetera, and do it within terms of economic viability for the developers? Because we're not in a position to do external subsidies. So, that was the goal and that's what we came up with. And on top of dealing with frankly, dilapidated units.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, uh, Nadia Natali? Am I pronouncing that correctly?
Yes.
All right. Perfect. So, we'll do another three minutes.
Yeah, I won't be that long. I was here probably twelve years ago, I think, Jeff, you were here. And I have the same question I had then. My house is at four zero four Mallory Way. And if you were to look at the map, it is being squeezed by both the, the, the building that is up north from my property and the cottages. So, Mallory and the cottages hit on both my sides. And what was being considered last time was this huge double building that would be just at my view, out my view, and my elevation is lower. So, it was looming up and I don't know if that's still happening. And I'm looking to you, Jeff, because I don't know if you would even know or remember. And, and what's going to happen to the other side of my house? Am I just gonna be squeezed in or is there gonna be some consideration how these developing buildings are going to address the houses that are around? So, that's my question. Does anyone, you know, can you answer that?
Yeah, can we, can we allow the developer to answer that?
So, it, it would, it would be up to you as the vice chair to have or to request for the developer to respond. For, just, just as a clarification, four oh four Mallory Way, is that the top unit?
Yes.
Or is that one of the middle units?
No, it's the top. It's right there.
Okay.
Bang against the, the development on both sides, right at the corner, like that, north and, and east.
Yeah, I, I think we can open it up and have Jeff respond, if that's okay, if you, if you recall.
Do, is it the same building situation that it was?
Yeah, I was gonna say, the plans are still the same. So, whatever prior plans that are there, that's the current plans. Not to say we wouldn't look at it. So, I'm not, I'm not sure which place you have it's.
Can you put up the map, please? That was number three, I believe, of your PowerPoint.
Yeah, hold on one second. Okay. Yeah, hold on one second. Okay.
One before that. It had blue. So my house is right where Eucalyptus comes. Okay. So can you point a little over to the right?
Yeah, which one is yours? Is it this one here?
That one.
Or is it this one here?
No, no, not, not.
This one here?
Okay.
Yes.
We actually reduced the size of the units there. Was that the Greenberg's home?
Can you see how I'm squeezed in by the two development properties? And as I said, my elevation is lower, so it's going to loom. If you have, whatever you're going to do, cut it down.
Did you buy that from Mr. and Ms. Greenberg?
What's that?
Did you buy that from the Greenberg?
Yes.
Yeah, we lowered, we lowered the building design.
Jeff, if you could, come to the podium, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucas.
We, during our approvals of the Mallory Way project, we reduced the second story elevations of that unit at Mr. Greenberg, Mr. and Ms. Greenberg's request, just so you know.
Okay.
So, and that's ultimately what, what was approved.
Okay.
So the cottages, which is the lower property.
Yeah.
Which adjoins yours to the east.
That's correct.
Right. Those, those buildings were already approved when we bought it.
And what is it going to look like just on that side?
It's Craftsman style, but it's one story.
But like one wood story?
It's one story.
Single story, yes, for cottages.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, thank you, Jeff. Thank you so much. All right, we have Mattie Gadsby?
I'm allowed to say, I mean, I, do whatever.
Oh. Yeah.
Hi, I, I'm pretty new to Ojai, and I want to thank you all for all the time and effort it takes to be thoughtful planners and go through all of this process. One of my questions was answered during your meeting regarding the cultural history of Ojai. The cottages and Mallory Way, Mallory and the cottages have quite a historical flavor as far as vacation resorts. I'm not a developer. I don't know the economics specifically, but it seems to me that those kinds of projects could be restored, designed, added to, not bulldozed. I don't, I will look forward to reading the environmental review and mitigation things. I've seen some photos online that were not very interesting. I don't know if those are the photos that are referenced. Saving a few photos and hanging them on the wall does not seem to me to do justice to Ojai and the cultural history. If I'm understanding what you said, the cottages, the first ones, will be leveled, will be vacated. Those are all considered affordable at this time? Those units, is that right? The cottages, the first phase?
So the cottages for the, no, I, I can't.
Yes, not a quick question, not a quick answer?
The, the quick answer is there's eight units on site. Those are being renovated, correct?
Yes.
Not, not demoed. Those are being renovated, if I recall correctly. And then they're adding two units to get to ten.
Okay, so I didn't understand that. Thank you for letting me know that. And those are currently considered affordable but will not be once they're renovated.
Correct. They're under the guise, guise of, of affordable.
Okay.
And then those are being, the affordability portions of those units are being taken off.
And I was very glad about Commissioner Bennett's questions.
And actually, I should mention that they're not deed restricted affordable units currently, but with this development agreement.
Yes, I understand. They currently happen to be where people in that category live, affordable. The rents are currently considered affordable. Yes. So I, I, yeah, I, I think the other questions have been brought up by Commissioner Bennett regarding the size of the affordable units. So that, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Mr. Quilisi, he's here. Oh, there he is. Hopefully I'm doing my best Steve Quilisi impersonation.
You're doing a great job, John.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, my name's Steve Quilisi. I live on West Eucalyptus. You see on the map there a street moving off to the left, right from the Mallory bungalows. That's the block that I live on. I have a couple of concerns here. The bungalows currently have twenty-five units, I believe. Is that correct? And with a density bonus in return for making some of them affordable, they can bump that twenty-five to thirty or thirty-one.
With that site, it's actually not a density bonus. At, at current, at current.
Density rules?
Density rules per the R2, they can be up to thirty-one.
I see, okay.
They're proposing instead, as a part of, sorry, going into this again, but as a part of the city council approval in 2012, they're at thirty.
Yeah, okay. The, the density bonuses that I think I see here on the other two properties on, on, on Ventura and, and Matilah, and also on South Montgomery, look to me like density bonuses. One is, one is proposed to have twice the density that would otherwise be allowed, and one three times the density that would otherwise be allowed. That feels excessive to me. It may be the only way by making all of those things moderate and market rate that this project pencils out, but I, I worry about that. Second, I worry about parking. Obviously, the bungalows can concern me the most because those are the closest to where I live, but the bungalows have more units under this proposal than are currently there, and fewer parking spaces. That means you're pushing residential cars out onto residential streets. It happens to be my street. Why it, why it concerns me, I look back to what the Planning Commission did most recently with a hotel right downtown, and all of the parking that was required is accommodated on private property, not on public street parking. And I'm afraid that this will not do that. Third, I am concerned, as always as we've, as we've discussed many, many times in Planning Commission, about the supply of water. The bungalows, the cottages, and the World University are all existing projects, and they presumably have allocations of some sort from Casitas right now. The South Montgomery site is bare ground. If Casitas has provided a will-serv letter, does that mean that there's a main, there's a water main in the area and we can hook you up to it, or does it mean there is in fact sufficient supply from Casitas to handle those, I think it's fifteen more homes there? So those are my questions, and I hope that the answers to all those come out before a decision is made here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, Lynn Gillian?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lynn Gillian. I'm, I live at 209 South Montgomery, and I think several of my neighbors are here and are going to speak because this, well, first of all, I want to thank the Planning Commission for the service that they provide to the community.
Thank you.
It's got to be a thankless job. But the first time that I noticed that this development was being proposed was just like a little over a week ago when we got the notice. And, and then now it seems like it could very quickly be approved. So while many of the other sites have been in the works for a long time, this one is like slam bam, you know, fifteen units done deal. Maybe not the look of it, but the number. And I think going from the five units that would be under the current VMU to the fifteen is just too many. It's too dense. On one acre, the building and the parking would pretty much take up the whole property. Point, not even an acre, yeah, point six, what did we say it was? And it's not going to be in keeping at all with the other buildings and homes on the street. And fifteen parking spaces. That's raising a lot of red flags with my neighbors because that street is parked solid a lot of the time. I don't know where, if these people have a second car, they're never going to be able to park it. And the, and also, you know, at some point, we've got to address the speeding on that street because people go flying down there. And then the other thing is that whereas the other parcels are mixed, market rate and affordable, South Montgomery, you know, is perfect for all affordable, I guess. It meets all the, the requirements. But, you know, is the quality of the construction going to be any different from the other ones? And, you know, wouldn't it just be nicer to be also mixed, you know, for the, for the neighbors and for the residents? And my sort of last question is more of a business question. If the Aliso Street and the Mallory Way are eventually going to be offered up for sale and leave the hands of the developer, but, but Montgomery, or Affordable Montgomery is going to be fifty-five years of, you know, checking people's income and moving tenants in and out of these little apartments, is it going to be a viable financial project? I mean, could it go bankrupt if that's all that's left when it's not supported by the market rate units in the other ownership places? Now, he did reference that he owns a lot of units down in Ventura, but I guess my question is, is like, if it's all affordable, you know, is that really, and it's not subsidized by other properties, you know, is it, is it going to fall on hard times?
Yeah, we can, we can bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so next up is Larry. And Larry, I apologize, I can't get your last name. Oh, there we go.
Thank you. I can't imagine what all these development meetings and papers take, and the time and the money and everything else, and the fact that we need a housing that's affordable, which is different than affordable housing. Is there any way to make it so that the housing that's supposed to be affordable is only for Ojai residents? And only for, or for Ojai employees that live, well, in the area? Like, for example, if the school department was going to put houses on the Chaparral land, could it be for just, just for Ojai residents? But the biggest problem, I think, is going to be the parking and the density. I mean, you've got World University, they sold it as an office building development. There's a need for small office space in Ojai. Unfortunately, COVID came, and here we are. They're trying to get rid of it, develop it, do something with it because it's sitting there. Okay. Montgomery's a whole nother issue. I don't know much about Mallory, so I can't go there. But where World University is, it's in the middle of the city. I mean, you know, it's great to live in the city if it's Manhattan, and maybe if it's Ojai, but you need to have no outside storage permitted, or people, I know they live there and they have a right to have an inflatable pool, having their kids outside and having a barbecue right on the main street. But it is the center of Ojai, and we're trying to keep a character. And they're going through all this historical attributes, and they just tortured the Oaks and what have you, and, and this is continuing. And I think we need the housing. Okay, that's easy. The traffic, the parking, the parking's going to be a real issue, especially World University. Where are they going to park? Over at the Rainbow Bridge? Over at the park, some other parking lot? I mean, people have two cars. It's a couple. The rent's going to be, what, fifteen hundred? But the, and the affordable end, those people have a lot of investment on, on South Montgomery. You've got the condominiums, you've got help of Ojai, you've got everything else. Parking is a real issue. We just went through it. They're not going to provide valet parking. Is that pretty much, you're not, right? No valet parking.
You don't.
No valet parking, okay, okay. But, but that's the problem. I mean, you require parking of Rancho to have their venue. They had, they had to show leases or whatever they had to show to get the parking. Yet we, they pounded the Oaks, and here it's like, they bought the land, here's the parking, get off my case. Okay? And, and thank you. But anyway, but that's the whole point is parking. They're not going to build a garage at Chaparral, and I got twenty-three seconds left. And anyway, but that's the whole point. Anyway.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. All right. And I apologize, I can't read this last name either, but we have Hank, 305 South Montgomery? Hank? There we go.
Yeah, Jean and I, ladies and gentlemen, hi. Jean and I live right across the street from 304 Montgomery. And as far as the density and the, all the affordable units being put on 305, or 304 Montgomery, we feel that's very unfair to the residents who live on South Montgomery. I mean, it's, you look at the way things are going to be constructed. Will the quality of materials, both exterior and interior, be as good as you put in your market rate places? The lady made a wonderful point about, is, is it financially sustainable? It's, it's not going to be, to me, a high-quality-looking place. About eleven years ago, we were having our design review with this very group. I think a gentleman there might have been on the commission at the time. And we came up with a design that was totally rejected by the, by the Planning Commission for a few, few good reasons. So we, we got together with them, we listened to them, we came up with a, something that was more acceptable, that had a good street appeal, that was welcoming, and was, fit the character of South Montgomery Street. I'm only bringing that up because it came out to be a good, a good job. It was a win-win. And it's something that when people come up from the parking lot to downtown every Saturday and Sunday, dozens of them, if we happen to be out, out in the front yard, they're very complimentary. That, you know, it's, it's, it's a good-looking place. It fits Ojai. But what are we going to have across the street? Is, what is it going to look like? Is it going to meet the same standards that you put to us? I'd like to know that. And I hope it is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up is Jan. No last name for Jan. If Jan is here. Nope. Okay. Then I have, next up is Thomas Owens. All right.
Hello, I'm Thomas Owens. I live at 263 South Montgomery, which is just right across the street, Catty Corner. We have twenty-three units there, fifteen on the west side and eight on the east side. And I guess mainly what I want to say, parking is a problem. And we see it every weekend. And as president of our HOA, I end up dealing with violations of parking in our unit because there's no parking on the street. And so they see an open parking space inside and just pull right on in. And so it is a problem. And, you know, one thing that was said here is that you didn't do a traffic study because it wasn't required. I don't think that's fair to these people, you know, because there is a traffic problem there. And you should do a study there. You really should. Because we cross the street, my wife and I, as part of our, our duty, and we have many times almost been hit there. So please, please, can I ask you to do a traffic study? Consider the parking. There's only fifteen spaces of parking out in front of that building, total. So each family has two cars in there. And there's, so they'll be, the street will be full just with that residence only. And it's really going to be an issue that I think you kind of maybe sidestepped or overlooked, but please, just because it's not required, please do it for these people. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Thomas. Okay, next up I have is Gail Montec. There we go.
Hi, I'm Gail Monteca.
Hi, I'm Gail Monteca from 309 South Montgomery. Thank you all for your work, fine work and diligence. I know it's been a long haul. But I'm going to whine, so. South Montgomery is a crazy street. People do drive really fast. There's, it's parked up like crazy. Pulling out of our driveway is treacherous. I mean, half the time I have to stop and someone almost slams into me. So I can't imagine 15 more trying to get out there. Just. So do a study, but you could stand there and, and see how bad it is. So I'm also a little confused that Mallory Way and the cottages at the Flowers aren't just continuing to be low-income because that's what they are now. To me, that seems beautiful, appropriate as far as apples to apples, like they should just be there. And if you want to put two or three houses, if you have to, it's still going to be hard on, on our area to put that much more housing there. But at least that would kind of make sense. But the shoehorn, wow, I can't even, can't even imagine what that's going to be like. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, and Mr. Miley?
Bill Miley. For the record, my family and I have lived here since 1968. And I've been actively involved in affordable housing for the last eight or nine years. So I've been an active citizen-involved person on this four-part project for the last four or five years. I support the configuration and provides overall benefit to the city. The Mallory Bungalows, these could be market rate right now, but because the Becker Group doesn't raise the rent, which they could, they haven't. It historically goes back to 1947, when a Ventura person developed the site principally for returning war- or two veterans as a motor court. A big swimming pool. It was a real fashion place to come for a few days or a week. And then over the years, it was purchased by a number of people. And finally, the Becker Group, I bought it in 1997, I believe. Okay. So through a city structured development agreement, the package over several years was put together into a comprehensive market and affordable rental plan. The Becker Group under several different corporate ownerships, as you know, they own the Flowers, the World University. And then because the city required it, they had to buy the lot in South Montgomery, which is one of the few that are available. So the World University, that was originally City Hall when Cookie and I, my family, came here in 1968. They were going to turn it into office buildings, but agreed to turn it into 10 rentals, three of which are affordable. Cottage of the Flowers, we all know about that. So in order to meet the city general planned housing element, to prevent affordable housing laws, the Becker Group and the city worked this thing out. So South Montgomery, I want to say a couple of things here. Years ago, when we first came here, that property at the end of Montgomery was the Evergreen Cottages. There were about 25 affordable houses there by market rate because you couldn't raise the prices very much. And they were allowed to deteriorate by the new owners so they could build the Los Robles condos. That's how that happened. So it seems to me that the 15 affordable houses that will be on the site with parking at the back, and my understanding is that those folks are basically going to be asked to own one car, not two. Regarding water, affordable housing by state law has priority for well-served water assignments. And they can only be denied if there's an entire district area-wide emergency that nobody gets anything anymore. And the issue of EMF in the back, electromagnetic force, the state says that's not a problem. So I support in conclusion. This is a comprehensive development that's been worked on for over 10 years. The development agreement was done with city council, city management. And it's fair not only to the private sector, but it provides great public benefits, which is for our city of Ojai. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. All right. So that concludes our public comments.
We have some online.
Oh, I apologize.
Right, we've got some hands raised.
Okay, I didn't see that.
Virtually.
Oh, yeah. Oh. Are you, Sandra? Did you fill out a card? Okay, I apologize. Let me see here. Oh, there you are, Sandra. Yep. I don't know how I missed your name. I apologize for that. Yes, odds, yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for calling me up.
For raising your hand. I appreciate that.
I'm a resident at 263 South Montgomery Street. So I live across the street from the 304 development that's being proposed. And one of my questions is, is there a manager that would be on site to issue what might develop between these small units with renters living that close together? Because they will have issues. I've lived in apartment buildings. There will be issues. Traffic on Montgomery is growing all the time. 15 new cars are parking on the street where do other cars park that are going to enjoy Libby Park, our new restaurants, the Ojai Arts Center and our downtown. 15 extra spots on Montgomery during the weekend would be that whole block between Willow and the trail. Google Map directs drivers to come up Creek Road down Montgomery. Added traffic during any time. The architectural design is aesthetically not pleasing and does not blend into the overall beauty of the surrounding area. Our neighbors across the street from this development worked, worked to design the outside of their home to beautifully blend in. And where, where are the air conditioning units going? On top of the buildings? That would not be a pleasing view. Right now, we are looking at a single, small window and a door that opens out onto Montgomery Street. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, online, do we still have hands raised?
Linda Garrett.
Linda, go ahead.
Hi, hello. Good afternoon, good evening. My name is Linda Garrett, but also Linda Barazza Garibaldi. And I live up on Raymond Street. Ojai native since, my family has lived here since the 1920s. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, good. So a couple of things. I wanted to ask Mr. Lucas Seabert and Mr. Matthew Summers and Mr. James Vega. Do you work for the Ojai city, do you work for Ojai or do you work for the developer, first of all? Why are Mrs. Mr. Lucas Seabert doing all these proposals for the developer? I just did not quite understand that. Okay, first question. Secondly, my family has lived right next door to Mallory Way, the proposed Mallory Way development since before the 1920s. Native, native Ojai citizens. And wanted to ask, also ask Mr. James Bennett why he did not recuse himself when his daughter lives at the end of Summer and the, the new proposal, Summer and, and Canyada Street, which is going to be the new egress from the Mallory Way project. Second thing, this has not been going on recently. I have letters in my files from 2006 when we have fought against this entire project on Mallory Way. At first, it was proposed as a 28-unit condominium project. And then it just grew and grew and grew. And we've been fighting City Hall for years. And then why did you not notify any of our neighbors here? I went around and canvassed every neighbor in our neighborhood, which we, I know everybody, all the way down to, from Raymond Street to Amala Street, to Canyada, to Summer, to Aliso. We've lived here our entire lives for, I said, since 1920. I wasn't asked, and I, I thought, I thought Mr. Randy Haney was a friend of mine. He knows I live up here. I don't even know about your IDHOT committee that you put together to put this going forward. I sent you a letter today about, how can you make this, this is not feasible. When I had to get out of here for the fire a few years ago, when was that? Was it 2017? We couldn't even, there was no egress even with, without that added buildings or people there. But the main thing is that I went down there to rent a prop, one of those, those low-income units, which were renting for $850. Everybody said you didn't know what they were renting for? They were renting for $850. That's the amount, lowest income rental units in Ojai. And you're complaining all the time, but we don't have low-income rental units? Okay, so I went down to rent a unit because I was going to remodel my home. And now you want to replace and those units and also the cottage among the flowers, lowest rental in Ojai? With what? With what? How many? 40, 50 condominiums? And they're going to move all the low-income over to in front of the Edison Station?
Ms. Garrett, you're, you're out of time.
That's too bad.
Thank you. Okay, any more online?
We have Anita.
Anita? Okay. Anita, go ahead. You've got three minutes? Anita, can you hear us?
Okay, here's Natalia.
All right, Natalia?
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, you, you got three minutes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you very much. I wanted to ask, in dollar amounts, what is the dollar amount for what is considered moderate income? And also, okay, good job. And also low income?
Is that a?
Do I ask my questions in concession or do you want to pause to answer that first?
No, it's okay. Are you addressing a, a certain individual or is this just a general broad question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we have that, we have that answer. Go ahead.
Hi, I think I can have that answer. I, I think I pulled up the 2022 Ventura County income limits. So they're broken up by household numbers. So there's a lot of information based on four-person, two-person household and so on. So, you know, for a one-person household, for extremely low income, that would be a person earning, let's see, $26,000, $26,350 a year. Very low income is 50% of the area median income. That correlates for one-person household to $49,900 a year income. And moderate would be, which is 120% of the area median income for a one-person household is a salary of $96,950 for a one-person household.
Okay, so when we're talking about moderate income, which only a select few of the units are considered moderate, we're talking about someone making close to $100,000 a year. You said $96,950. I just wanted to draw the comparison. I don't know any waitstaff or teachers that are making $100,000 a year. I guess my point here is it's truly not affordable housing. Also, I am a resident at the cottages among the flowers. And we are very fortunate to, I have a 10-year-old son with special needs. And I am just graduated graduate school. And I'm a therapist working with children with special needs. I'm a longtime Ojai resident and we're really lucky to have this unit here, which is a two-bedroom, one bathroom. We're away from the street. My son isn't great with street safety. We've been super happy here and very, very worried about when we're asked to leave because these units are going to be under construction and no longer affordable to us. And I am one-story in this neighborhood. And there's going to be 30-plus stories, just like mine, of longtime Ojai residents who are good families working in this community, who now are going to be struggling to stay in Ojai and to find another home that we can afford. I also wanted to ask if the environmental report results are available to the public? And walking the grounds, I pass many trees, very tall palm trees, that have the orange rope tied around them indicating that those trees will be cut down. So I wondered how many trees in cottages among the flowers and Mallory Way will be cut down? And those were not mentioned. Many trees being planted were mentioned, but not the trees that are being cut down. And I also just wondered about the results from the Environmental Impact Study and if it's available to the public and where we might be able to find it.
Okay. Thank you. Lucas, do you know about the environmental report?
I can, I can respond to, to the environmental report. That, that's available for public viewing. The MND was a part of the cottages. That was done in 2015 up to 16, when it was approved by Planning Commission. And then the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report, the findings and mitigation for that is also provided and available for, for public viewing. And that was approved and certified in 2012. So both of those documents are public record. They were not included within this package, but certainly are available upon request.
Okay, and how might we find them? So if I want to look it up tomorrow, how would I go about doing that?
You could put a public records request in with, with the city, with community development, and we could get you those, those documents.
So it's not something we can look up from our home on the internet?
I don't think those are online currently through our website.
So that doesn't make it truly accessible to everyone?
Accessible from a public records standpoint, yes.
All right. I don't have any further comments. I just truly hope that this project will be reconsidered from all the facets that you've heard from the public today.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Appreciate that. Oh, Leslie, Leslie Hess?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
My name is Leslie Hess. I'm representing simply Ojai tonight. There have been great questions asked and lots of great answers. And thank you all for your hard work. You've answered a lot of my questions. But I respectfully request that you continue this item so that the community could gain more understanding about this huge development deal. It's evident tonight, and it was difficult for me to read through the staff report, getting it on Friday, but you've been here. The public is a little confused and some people didn't know about this. I'm concerned about these, why these four separate developments are put together, even though you answered some of that. But spanning over a decade from this settlement discussion with cottages among the flowers leaves me with questions. Additionally, I'm concerned that future council members and planning commissioners won't have any say in these projects. And circumstances in the community may change in the next 10 years. I too would like to hear more numbers such as low income for a four-family. People in Ventura, I believe, is now at $90,000. So, you know, if you talk about the amounts of rent that will be charged in these moderate income units. amounts of rent that will be charged in these, uh, moderate income units and low income units, that would be very helpful. But thank you for listening and I'm asking please that you continue this item.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, uh, do we have one more?
Okay, can you hear me this time?
Uh, we, we can hear you, yes.
This is Anita, and Natanya, who spoke earlier, is my neighbor. So hi, Natanya. We're a very close knit community here in the cottages among the flowers. We all know each other. We look after each other. And I really think your income data that was mentioned earlier that stated, I believe, that there was no one below moderate income who lived in the cottages among the flowers, that's inaccurate. We probably all are. And some of us probably go to very low income. And my understanding of this project is, so I'm going to put together the cottages and the Mallory Way. That's a total of thirty-three units. So we currently have thirty-three homes that are affordable for low income, very low income. I'd be surprised if there's moderate here. And we're going to trade that for five in this project. So I think you really need to think about that and consider the actualities of really what's going on in the Ojai community because then we had COVID come in and people lost income in that. But it also had a boomerang effect of rent has skyrocketed here. I mean, I, I've met many people who have moved in here after I did, and they said this was the only place in Ojai they could afford. So I think we need to be very careful about that. Um, the environmental in, impact statement, of course, is very important. But another thing is this place has huge history between the Mallory Way and the, the flowers. That hasn't even been documented yet. Ojai does not have a record of the history. And I just don't understand why, you know, we're thinking about demolishing, tearing down, doing all this changing of landscape before we've even recorded what this place is. I've even heard reports that some of the duplexes in this area were moved from Thatcher here. I have no idea if that's accurate. I've heard all kinds of stories, you know, Oprah filmed a movie over there. There's just so many things. So it just seems like we're swallowing up a big history of Ojai without even recording it. Anyway, I don't want to go on too much. I could, but I think that it's getting late. And I think that the notion of a continuance is very well, um, stated. Thank you, and thank you for all your work.
Thank you, Anita. Okay, no one else? Okay. All right, so we'll conclude, uh, public comment, um, and we'll open it up for discussion.
And Vice Chair, um, Tran, uh, if I could jump in real briefly, I think it might be useful before commission discussion if staff could provide a couple of responses
Yep.
to some of the points that were raised.
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you. And with that, I'll note just briefly that on the, and I will go slightly out of order here. So bear with me on that front. To answer the question posed by Ms. Garrett, the, myself, the city manager, and the community development director all work for the city as an institution as controlled by a majority of the city council. And in that guise, per the city council's direction in May twenty nineteen, as reaffirmed earlier this year, we have worked to negotiate the proposed development agreement, brought now forward for public review. And as was previously reviewed at a public city council meeting a couple of months ago, and is going through this process, and then will come to the city council for a further public hearing. We do not work for the developer. Second, the environmental impact report for the cottages, I'm sorry, for Mallory Way bungalows is available online through the state Sequa Net Clearinghouse, uh, which is, uh, sequanet dot O P R dot C A dot gov. And I believe a link through that should be on our city's website to get you there. Although I don't think it was included in the staff report. But that E I R is available through the state website for, which, for those who aren't, um, don't live in, breathe sequer every day, has any E I R filed with the state is available on the state Sequa Net website. So that's available, but certainly we could make it more available on the city's website as well. And with that, I'll turn it over to the director for additional staff responses to some of the points raised.
Uh, thank you. So you answered the, the question in regards to the E I R. I would also like to note that the notification for, for this project or for this development agreement was done in a fashion of notifying, um, residents within a three-hundred-foot radius around each individual site. So we've got four sites here. Notifications and, and radiuses of a three-hundred-foot radius around the boundaries of each of those sites was provided. I can't speak to where one of the individuals that spoke earlier in terms of where they live and whether or not their neighbors were notified. I'm not sure how close they were to the edge of that three-hundred-foot radius. But I think it's just worth noting that the three-hundred-foot sometimes clips a corner and then it won't hit the rest of the, the residences along a specific block. And then it's assumed that that was missed. It's important to note that that radius piece is, um, especially for Mallory and, and cottages, is really one swath because those two butt up against each other. So I think that's worth noting. The history piece, um, there were two, uh, historic resources reports that were done. And then a second that was a follow-up for cottages, uh, that was done as well that documents the history for both of those sites, spanning, um, roughly a hundred years. So it went through the history there, identifying, um, previous uses, uh, and, and making note of those. And that's the reason for the, um, one of the mitigation measures that's covered for both of those sites to, to photo, to document as a part of that, um, so that we have the record for, for future generations. So I just wanted to note that as well. I think there was one more. The affordable housing, I think, was, was spoken to, um, by the attorney.
There, there was a question about, um, legality around limiting to one car. Is that possible?
You know, the affordable housing agreement will have specific parameters. And even C C N Rs could, could ratchet that down. I would caution that there are certain pieces to that, and I, I think the attorney's going to speak to that.
Yeah, so there's, there's a couple of caution points there. Federal and state law prohibit us from blocking the number of cars owned by a resident. That's just not something we have the power to prohibit, how many cars someone owns. But we do have, uh, in our code is set by state law, parking standards for projects, residential density bonus projects. And so those, those are what we're have, we have to enforce. The wisdom of them is perhaps not ideal, but unfortunately that's Sacramento has tied our hands pretty hard on parking standards for affordable projects that are capital A, D, restricted, affordable. Uh, and Lucas, I think, has a table of the parking standards if, if we need to go through the projects space by space. And the reality of it that's worth noting is for a number of folks who live in, in a low-income how, low, again, capital L, capital I, capital A, affordable, low-income housing that meets these standards. Sometimes there is only one car or even no cars as folks, uh, rely on public transit to get around. I know that's different than how a number of the folks in this call or in the room may be thinking of sort of living. It, it's a different, uh, a different set of economic situation. But again, it's straight state law. We cannot prohibit the number of cars owned by residents of these facilities.
Thank you.
I, I should actually, to answer the other question was raised, um, by Larry, I didn't catch his last name. The state and federal law also prohibit us from limiting the residents to only those who currently live in Ojai. Or who currently work in Ojai. We can set up, however, a, a moderate preference system that, uh, puts a smidge of a thumb on the scale, so to speak, for the lottery process, but it has to be done through a random lottery process. And, uh, that thumb in the scale is something like allowing, requiring the lottery sign-up to be in person in city hall. So you couldn't have someone who, who was unable to get to Ojai. But it's still a random lottery. It's open to anyone who meets the income qualifications. And that's dictated by federal and state law.
Got it. Thank you for the clarity. Okay. Commissioners, do you have any, uh, I guess we're in the discussion phase. So Commissioner Lotis, I'll kick it over to you if you've got some items to discuss. But I can certainly bring up some as well.
Well, I'm willing to start it off. Um, I may not be done by the time. Ask for a second round, but, um, well, I guess number one, I'm, I'm very concerned about proceeding ahead with any kind of, uh, planning commission vote or action to move forward on this at this point. I personally would like to see a lot more detail and clarity on, um, rents. With the cottages in particular, also Mallory Way. I want to, I want to, I want to see the data. I'd like more detail on the, um, the, the apartment, the sizes of what's at the cottages versus what's going to be proposed to replace. But, uh, but most of all, I think, um, I for one, I am not ready to move ahead and I think that, um, the, the, the magnitude of the, the information and detail here is substantial. Uh, kind of overwhelming to really review it properly. And, um, I'm, 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 I'm concerned actually. So we did a categorical exemption on this. And I'm wondering why really, whether that's appropriate, and I'll talk about that maybe later. But I, uh, since this project is relying on former, on previous environmental documents that are not even at city hall, available for people to come in and see, or not even online. That is, that is a no-go. I mean, we've got to have all the information that's back up to this stuff, ready, available. I don't want to see any public information requests for anything. That's, that's beyond ridiculous. And, um, so, okay, so, uh, I, I, I'm looking for a continuance tonight because I think we need, uh, more detail on, on the, what's going on on these sites. Are the trees being cut down, for example? There were a lot of questions raised that are not being answered, um, that haven't been answered yet. And I think we need it laid out in the staff report so it's very clear. How many units are there? How many need, how many units are going to be built? Let's do it in a table form. So it's clear what the sizes are, um, what the density is per, per acre. Uh, I mean, some kind of uniform system where we can compare apples to oranges. So, uh, at the very least, I'm ready to continue. Number two, I think I'm, this is a project that has been under the radar, behind closed doors, negotiated. This is the first time it has come to light with noticing of residents. And, and so all of a sudden, these issues are coming up as they need to. But at this point on, we need to be very transparent and open about what the heck is being proposed and, um, when it's going to happen and so forth. So, um, there's that.
No, it's okay. So.
You know, I'm also concerned about a development agreement as just as a planning tool, to be honest with you. I would probably too far down the road for this, but, but to change, but, uh, to cobble together four disparate parcels with different zones, in different neighborhoods, different, you know.
Are you, are you?
Positions. For example, on Montgomery Street, there is a parking problem. There is a traffic problem. It has changed significantly since that parking, whenever the parking stunt thing was done before, that Google wasn't around and Google wasn't telling people to take Creek Road. So I suspect that there is probably a need to do some environmental, um, technical studies on traffic. I think the hazards living, the, the hazard, hazardous risk of the substation is, is actually an issue. And so, uh, you know, normally a development agreement is used for a, a kind of a large-scale project. It's all in one site. It might have multiple phases, but it's like more for something like a resort hotel. So I, I am quite concerned about doing a development agreement on this, which, which actually ends up bypassing the normal development review process. Where, which allows focus on each property. It allows hearings. It allows noticing. It allows the, the review and discussion of details for each property. We are just like, I, I mean, just looking at this from thirty thousand feet, we're just hardly, it's really hard to get into the weeds on this and we're going to, I, I'm really worried about it. So I'm worried that it, that this has not seen the light of day until now. So now we're getting good feedback and, and I'll, I'll tell you, good projects come out of a rigorous review process. Where multiple heads and minds and hearts are all looking at the project and asking good questions and, and, uh, and so forth.
I appreciate that. Um, can we?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
The lack of very low and extremely low housing provided in this proposal greatly concerns me. We are not dealing with the need. And I think some, somebody who came up expressed it, uh, precisely. Let's see, where was it? That she lives with her son in a two-bedroom, one-bath cottage. They can pay the rent. And, you know, if we're looking at, what is it? Four hundred square feet is the alternative to move to. And it's going to be affordable and low, not extremely low and very low. I don't know. I'm not liking what I'm seeing. And I also think that there's some, there are some grounds for just doing a focused E I R with, um, with more, with an update on the historical preservation or the historic resources, uh, traffic, probably water use, so. And I, I, I'm not done, so I'll, but I'll come back later. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you, John.
No, I appreciate that. Um, a couple of things, uh, maybe we can address just to make sure we can hit them. One was a continuance. Is that something that we could do?
Before we get into that,
Yeah.
can I respond to, to a couple of these points that Commissioner Lotis had brought up earlier?
Sure.
So in terms of the categorical exemption and whether or not the E I R or M and D are available, I did state that through public records, you can certainly, you can certainly request that. You can even come to the counter. We have that information ready and available at city hall right now. In addition to that, if you aren't able to come to.
No, no, I was reacting to.
I'm not done speaking.
I was reacting to the, to the
Respond here?
Need for somebody to file, uh, public information's request. What I?
And I, I responded to that. Can I just continue speaking here? Thank you. The, the last piece is, um, through public clearinghouse, which I think, uh, the city attorney had mentioned as well. You have access to that document currently. You don't even have to go through public records. Because it's an E I R, state clearinghouse requires it. There's a number assigned to it. And there's, I don't, I, I can't say for certainty that there's a link on our website. If not, um, there's certainly a way in which you can get easy access to that. That's, that's the first piece. The second piece is, uh, the noticing. So when this went before city council in January, was it noticed as a three-hundred-foot radius? No. Was it noticed in the paper? Yes. So that was the first opportunity for the public to come out and really have an opportunity to dive in and sink their teeth into the development agreement. That development agreement was a part of the packet and provided to city council, um, for discussion. And certainly there was a lot of discussion. I, I believe there was, there's several people that came in, um, and provided comment to that, to that effect. The, the development agreement as a planning tool, um, within the parameters of this development agreement, that's not with a purview and the discussion piece for, for the planning commission for tonight. That development agreement has already been drafted. It's already been identified by city council as the correct tool to apply moving forward. In terms of the substation, uh, Mr. Miley already spoke to that, and I confirmed that as well. There just isn't data that shows it that, that that's an, that that's an issue. And then finally, the last piece, which is the lack of affordable housing, it's an apples and apples piece, and that's something that's been identified. It's certainly embedded within this development agreement in terms of how you're reviewing it. Um, and I think that's an important piece to note as well. So I just wanted to make those. Oh, and then the last piece is the historical piece. There's been historic resources reports prepared and updated for both of these sites, for Mallory and for cottages. And certainly there's some rich history involved with that as well, so. And mitigation measures that go along with that, as I had mentioned earlier.
One additional point, if I may. As revised through Senate Bill 743 a couple of years back, SEQA now no longer evaluates traffic impacts using level of service and does not consider neighborhood traffic impacts at all. So that would not be analyzed through the EIR. Instead, it's analyzed through the vehicle miles traveled approach, taking a look at regional traffic impacts. That analysis, were we to do a new EIR, would be done. And based on the analysis from the city's consultant, included in the staff report, is unlikely to find any regional traffic impact at a vehicle mile standard level. And I just want to reemphasize the, for the public who may be concerned, this process, the development agreement negotiations through the city council, did not and does not bypass or eliminate public hearings. Instead, we're in one now. There will be another one in the city council. There was one on January 25th, 2022, uh, public discussion, not a hearing. And then again, back in May 2019, when this all began with council direction to solve the housing issue, or not solve, but move it forward. That also was a public hearing. Thank you.
Appreciate that. And Mr. Bennett, did you have any comments in discussions?
Yeah, um, thank you for, uh, asking. Um, I, I guess I take a different, um, approach towards this. Um, uh, when I heard about the fact that four properties were being looked at, I thought, gee, that's a really clever way to solve the issues. I, you know, I first saw this property or these two properties, Mallory and, and the cottages, um, and, and I thought, gee, what, what, what are we going to do with that as a, as a community? Because these are really rundown, um, places. And, um, we do need to provide good quality housing towards, for the people who live here. There's, they obviously address both an opportunity and a need for, um, housing for people who have less income. But anything you do to improve it is probably going to push it, um, to be unaffordable. And, uh, so I was very, I was, I was sort of happy and surprised to see that somebody thought, well, why don't we bundle this with a bunch of other properties and sort of take a look at a, a set of things? And maybe we can solve some of the problems in site one over in site two. And I've got notes on, on this stuff in, in, in general terms. And, you know, I'd love to see a little more history addressed in the way in which the, the, um, the Mallory property, um, is, is done. Um, and I'd, you know, I've got a little concern about the size of these units. And can you, can you, in fact, I'm not worried about having too many cars because I don't know how you can put two people in most of these units. Um, I think there are going to be a lot of units with one person in them. Um, so I think that strangely enough, I think that that's going to be the case. But, um, in general terms, I'm kind of excited about the fact that the city and the developer have been working on this. Um, and trying to find a solution to the fact that we have an obligation to provide more housing. We're sort of stuck by it. We're a strange old community because we don't have very, very many lots to put housing on. Um, and don't, and, and there's certainly a high level of NIMBYism in, 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 in the town, as there is in most towns. Um, nobody wants to have a low-income housing near them. I mean, goodness knows. So, you know, I'm, I'm sort of very, um, puzzled. I'd sure love to get this thing moving forward. If people need an answer to some of these questions, I don't know what the best vehicle is for that. But boy, you can, you can study things for death for years and this stuff or study them to death. And this thing has been in the market, has been in the, in the, in the process for a long time. A piece of me says, let's get on with it. Um, so I guess I, I come out at a different place than, uh, um, uh, my, well, at least, um, the person on the screen to my right. Hi Kathy Lottis. Um, I, you know, I see, I see that. But, you know, we had somebody complain about a palm tree. Well, we don't protect palm trees. You know, they're not indigenous. They have, you know, we have, you know, but if, if you look out from your kitchen window on that palm tree, you're going to be upset about it. And you're going to want to use any hearing that you can, you can speak to to stop them cutting the palm tree down. I don't know if they're going to cut the palm tree down. I don't know what the circumstances are with this yellow, with this orange, uh, um, plastic tape that's around the tree. But anyway, I just, uh, I, I, it, this is a bold plan. It's to take four different properties and trade them around and hopefully come up with something that serves all the community. And, uh, you know, I, I, I can feel for all of the people who live in these communities. Um, as my daughter, I don't think she lives 300 feet from any of these. And you'd have to ask her, it's, you know, how she feels about them. She's, she, she doesn't ask me my opinion. Um, and I don't ask her about her opinion on things like this. So, uh, I do not own her house. I didn't buy her house. She bought it herself. And I hadn't even thought about it when we were, when, when we were preparing the stock. And I didn't think, oh, my daughter lives here. But I don't think she lives 300 feet from, from these areas. So anyway, um, you know, I think Montgomery and Mallory, I, the whole thing sort of, you know, the World University is sort of interesting. Taking a, a, a building or a set of buildings that were created for a different use and turning them into housing. I mean, I think, I, I think that it's, I think it's terrific that people put all this effort in. And instead of, um, you know, questioning their motives or anything else. I think it's, it, it's too bad we sort of come to that. Um, and, uh, there's been a lot of work, obviously, that's gone into this. And we've got, you know, okay, you tell me where to put the, the, the low-income housing. You know, 30 units of low-income housing in this town where we're not going to wind up with a, with a room full of people upset about it. So, um, anyway, I, um, I, I think there's more work to be done, but I'm not sure if moving this to another meeting is the way to get at it. And as I understand it, um, things like the Montgomery property, um, has a lot more work to do on it. And we are being asked to make a decision about any design issues or any, any of the detailed, um, uh, decisions about that. That's got to be brought back to us at some point in the future. Um, so I'd like, I'd love to know a clarification from, um, staff as to what our options are, uh, in terms of, or what are, what, what we will be able to review going forward. Um, if we say, all right, let's go, let's push this forward to the city council. The city council is going to take a whack at it. And then as I understand it, we're going to have a chance to take a whack at it. Um, individually as these properties, as these ideas get more fully developed. And so
Yeah, that's a great question. Will it, Lucas, we'll let you address that.
Thank you. I'll go by, uh, if I could, just go by site by site.
Yeah.
Um, for each of these. So let's start with the two that have been, um, that have been vetted through the public hearing process, um, starting with Mallory. So Mallory was approved in 2012 by city council. Um, that one, through this development agreement, agreement is not identifying that it comes back to this body in any way, any way, shape or form. Um, but it does allow for it to continue moving forward. It's the fourth phase of this
Yeah.
development agreement. So it's the last phase. Um, it also is requiring some actions to be done even before a shovel is in the dirt. Um, in terms of that engineering assessment report I had mentioned earlier. Um, then the one just to the south of it, cottages, that site, um, is the first phase. So that one is shovel ready with the items that would need to be done pre-phase, uh, that I had mentioned earlier. And then the, the World University, which is 109 North Ventura, existing building. Unless there's exterior changes that are proposed, that wouldn't be seen before this, this body, unless there were some changes made from, from an exterior standpoint. And then even at that point, we're either looking at teetering within a design review permit before this body or a director's exemption. And I haven't seen what sort of potential design changes that may come or no design changes that may come from that. That needs to be worked out with, um, through the developer before it comes before myself and then potentially before this body.
Okay.
The, the elephant in the room, and certainly the one that I think the, the community spoke on the most, is 304 South Montgomery. That one, the density is baked into this development agreement, but the design and the site layout have not been.
Yeah.
So there's still some wiggle room. I mean, even from a standpoint of, I know there was a couple of comments in terms of consistency with the surrounding neighborhood. Um, I mean, those are conceptual plans from what I can gather. And certainly there's room to grow from a, from a design standpoint. The square footage is pieces. That's something that I think, uh, the developer needs to work out in terms of each of those individual units.
Right.
I think it was a starting point from a discussion standpoint. They're trying to figure out how that works out for them as well. And they're also looking at it from the standpoint of, of how they address parking on site. They've got a site that's only so large. So they're trying to figure out, um, how that works all bundled into that, um, into that site. Um, so if you're asking, will, I think Commissioner Bennett had, had asked whether or not the development agreement would come back as an additional bite to the apple. That, that's not the case here.
Right.
Um, could it be continued? It could, but if we're continuing it, I need very specific reasons and research, just like I do with every continuance. And whenever we go through any or any other project or any sort of, um, potential code changes that we're looking at. And, and be very specific about that because I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not in the, in the, in the, um, the business of just spinning my wheels on, on a project like this. I've been intimately involved in this for the last two years as well, developing it, developing this from the ground up. But if there's rightfully things that need to be looked at further or additional clarifications that need to be, need to be, um, identified and brought back to this, to this body, makes sense. The other option to that and the other flip to that is providing those clarifications moving forward as a recommendation by this body as well. I think that, and, and just, just so the record straight, staff's recommendation is for this to move forward.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if there is additional pieces that need to be further clarified, certainly that could be identified by this body and then, and then, um, sent forward to city council.
Right. So based on the decision tonight, Mallory and, and Cottage, those are, those aren't coming back to us. Potentially, we might have a DRP with South Montgomery and also with the World Cottage.
With South Montgomery, you will definitely have a DRP.
Yeah, and potentially with the world, with the World University, if there's some changes, design changes.
Maybe with World.
Maybe with World, okay. So primarily what we're addressing is density and we're addressing, uh, the zone change for
Yes, that's actually a good point. I thank you for bringing that up. I know you mentioned that at the very beginning. I mentioned that during presentation, but there's no, no reason why we can't mention that again. This development agreement includes a zone change general plan amendment for World University.
Correct.
The other sites already have the appropriate zone.
Correct.
And general plan.
So World University is going from a PL, which is public lands, right?
Correct.
Okay. And going towards a, a VMU, which will obviously increase density.
Correct.
Yeah, unless there's another zone change in the future.
Right.
To go backwards.
Right.
Um, okay. And that's what we're, that's what we're voting on today.
Yes, and it's a recommendation voting on to, to city council for the resolution that's before this commission in this body tonight. Um, that includes a draft, uh, development agreement that has a draft ordinance, uh, assigned to it as well as the associated information and details within both of those documents.
Okay. Um, yeah, so with the increased density, obviously we're increasing density in two of the densest places in Ohio already, which is, uh, problematic. Uh, I mean, South Montgomery, fortunately, that's, uh, we got a few years before that one goes into play. Um, so we potentially could get a traffic study done or something where we look at that, even though it's not required. Um, but that might be something that we could look into. So I don't know if that is grounds for some sort of, and is there a possible way? Because this is such a large project and we've got four, you know, big situations taking place here that impact quite a few folks. Is there a way to break it up or does it all have to be together?
At this time, staff would not support and does not see a path to break it up. The reason being that the council directed negotiation of a comprehensive deal. The commission could decide to recommend move it forward, but add some caveats and then ask council to impose additional conditions. For example, asking that before Montgomery, uh, would be built, that a traffic study be done, although not required. Um, the commission could even recommend to council that, you know, we recommend approval, but, uh, Montgomery should become a not to exceed density of 15 units, uh, variable density, you know, maybe subtract a unit or two, although again, it's going to be up to council on the business terms. The commission should bear in mind that that distinction between the business terms and the land use terms. You could make a recommendation to move forward tonight with those additional recommended caveats or recommended adjustments would be fine.
Okay.
Or is, or should say is within your option set. As noted, your options also include a continuance or a straight up yay or down nay vote on what's proposed all around the table.
Right. Um, and then according to the, with the Mallory and, and the cottages, those, those afford, what we're doing is basically taking affordable housing and we're replacing it with moderate income. And we're moving that affordable housing down to South Montgomery and to universities. We're the, you know, World University. It seems like that's what we're doing.
If I could clarify that sort of slightly, um, the current proposal would take existing little a affordable housing that exists, but is not restricted to be affordable. Nothing would prohibit, um, the current owner from increasing the rent on that. We have no rent control nor rent stabilization ordinance. It's market forces only that have kept it, uh, little a affordable. And it is incorrect that all of the affordable housing is being shifted to South Montgomery.
Right.
Only 15 of the 25 units are being shifted there. 10, the remainder of it are split between World and Mallory.
Right.
So just to clarify that point, it's not all being shifted to Montgomery. It's being spread throughout the project.
I appreciate that. And there's no, we, we couldn't set some sort of condition where we need to put more affordable units in those locations, right? That would, that wouldn't be, that's past our purview.
It, yes, it's, it's past what was negotiated by council. You could recommend council ask for more, uh, and, and then it will be up to the council, uh, through the committee and the developer to, to negotiate. But at this time, I think council, the committee has negotiated the best deal they think they can get.
Okay. Okay. All right. Um, anybody want to make a motion?
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
Um, so, um, I understand, so with, um, Mallory Way bungalows. I, I understand the track map being approved and that, that's been recorded, so that's in place. But, um, I think what I'm hearing you say is that the, the development itself, the structures, the, 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 the design, the layout, all that, um, is not coming back to us because that's being covered in the development agreement. Is that correct? Otherwise, otherwise the design, um, would, design, design review, whatever, it would be coming to the planning commission for, for review, right?
Mallory Way would not return for design review by this commission because it was already approved by this commission some time ago. I forget the exact date, but it was a, similar to cottages. It also was a long time prior approval that would then be extended and validated.
But that approval expired some time ago is my guess for the, for the site, site plan review.
Absent disagreement, that approval would have expired, yes.
Okay. Okay. So we haven't spent any time on looking at the site plans or discussing any of it. So, um, I think that's a, that's a gap. I think it's a gap about moving the residents. There was a point well taken. Um, and I think, and I, I have to say that I really appreciate Um, and I think, and I, I have to say that I really appreciate Commissioner Bennett's wise, wise comments, much appreciated. Um, but I, but I think the, there, there could be a, a moving plan that needs to be part of this. But how are we going to deal with those people? We're just gonna give them their eviction notices? Um, so I, I do, I do think that that's been completely overlooked in the, um, in the development agreement. Um, so I, I would like to see this one more time to review the site plans for each project and, um, possibly to talk about things that just kind of have been left out so far.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett?
And, and, and the comments that, uh, Chair Trent also made were appreciative also. I, I, I agree with what you said, what you said, so.
Okay. Did you wanna make a, a motion, Commissioner Lottis?
Sure. Sure, I'll, I'll move to continue this item, um, uh, probably to the next meeting for the purpose of, uh, uh, looking at and discussing each of the site plans for each project that will be covered by the development agreement. Um, also to, um, for the commission to have another chance to, to digest the material and to identify, uh, any gaps in, uh, things that maybe should be covered by the development agreement, such as a, a phase out moving plan, something, something like that. Um, and I, I'm, I'm kind of, um, I know people said things, I wanted to respond, but, uh, I, I just think that, I think one more look at this at a detailed level would be very helpful. And I understand it's either the development plan as is or, uh, make recommendations on ways that the council might consider changes. Um, so I, I get that part of it. I just, I, I have trouble for a variety of reasons. Um, and I think laying this on the community, advertising in the Ohio Valley News is not reaching a big population. Let me just put it that way. So, um, it's kind of a surprise and, uh, I think, I think public comment and input is good. And also I think the substation does have issues beyond, um, uh, the electromagnetic radiation. And there are in fact, um, studies that that's a very high density radiation wave that comes off that site. And in fact, it may affect children. And, uh, the, the development agreement does not require any notification of residents of that, that facility. And there are probably additional hazards due to fire and explosion. And, um, so, uh, you know, it's, it, that might be a small thing, but it might be something that should be put in the development agreement that tenants or future purchasers should need to be notified about that, those, those risks. And those risks probably need to be identified through some sort of a small technical study. And, uh, so, uh, anyway, I'm, I'm kinda going off, off, off the route, main route here, but I think that it's worthwhile just taking another look and going into this at a more detailed.
And, and your, your reasons for the motion of continuance is, is gaps in the current proposal and notification to residents?
We don't have to notify residents again, uh, because it's continued, but, uh, gives another chance for the, in, in particular, it gives a chance for the commissioners to look at all the, uh, detailed site plans, since this is gonna be it for the, uh, basically for the, for the parcels, except for, um, Montgomery Way. Um, and, and, and time to think of additional, whether, whether there are additional concerns and be able to articulate that. Uh, I think that, um, well, I have other things I could bring up too, but I think it would be helpful to look at this one more time.
And we would move, that would be, uh, what date would that be if, if that, if we decided to move it to another meeting, to another next meeting? That'd put us in June, June, well, it's already June.
It's June today.
Yeah, but is it June, what, uh, second week in June?
The second week in June is June 14th.
Yeah, I...
15th, sorry.
Yeah, I will be out, I will be on vacation, so I, I won't be here for that one. And if we have another gentleman out and we don't have a replacement.
We don't have a quorum for the 15th.
Yeah, so that would just kick it down the road even farther.
Let me just identify something. So the developer that's here tonight has been going through a fairly lofty negotiations with an ad hoc.
Mm-hmm.
And that has, has taken the better part of two years.
Right.
Continuing it two weeks to, to look at each site plan, which is already provided to the commission, to look at gaps which have not been specified in the development agreement, and to think of additional concerns. I'm not sure how writer's staff report for that, just to be, just to be honest.
Yep, okay.
Okay, okay. This project came out one day before the, uh, three-day memorial weekend, and you expect everybody to review every page of this, this handout over a three-day holiday and be ready, fully immersed and understanding everything. And, uh, I've already spent about two days on this thing and it's not, I'm not, I am not, uh, I don't feel that it's been enough and much less for the community. It's very upsetting to hear staff say that. This is a huge, this is a, this is actually an important project and the documentation in this book is very important to be able to be very familiar with it and read it, evaluate it, and think about it. And that's very upsetting to hear that, um, somehow that is, uh, uh, I don't know, uh, unpatriotic or something, very upsetting.
Okay.
You know, I, I have to jump in here. We haven't heard any reason why it would be continued.
Right.
You know, so to, to just keep continuing to say it needs to be continued, it needs to be continued. Is it helpful for staff?
I've stated, I've stated the reasons why I thought it would be worthwhile to continue, which included review of the site plans as well as examining things such as a missing element, such as phasing out of residents on the cottages and the Mallory Way. So I have given reasons. If that's not enough, that's fine, but don't say that I didn't give reasons.
So my suggestion, if, if the concern is a, a moving or relocation plan, that could be a caveat that the commission provides is, you know, is, uh,
We can make that a condition.
Recommend that the city council require that, yeah, exactly.
And...
The other thing I'll add on that front is that existing state law has a number of relocation requirements for other projects. We could certainly tap into that. And, uh, the council, the commission could recommend that the council impose that as an added, added requirement to include appropriate tenant relocation, uh, requirements subject to, um, standard, standard rules for affordable housing projects. The other thing I would posit as a, as a question if I could, that, that may be behind the comments by staff, review of this, of the site plans for Mallory and cottages in detail would seem, we're having a hard time understanding why that would be the case when, if the project is approved, if the development agreement is approved, is proposed, the site plans are exactly the same as was previously approved. No modifications aside from the condition regarding the storm drain line are being proposed. So staff is trying to understand what would be the basis for further review of those site plans in detail.
The basis for review is that the, in particular, the Mallory Way site plan has expired and it would, it would need to come back to the planning commission without the development review agreement. So it is, this is the time to review to make sure that it, it seems to work. This is the time, this is the only time we'll get. It's already an expired project.
Which as proposed would be valid.
Plan, that's what you said. So, yeah, we need to look at it, we need to do our due diligence. And, uh, you know, this is a very important project and we were told we had to hurry through with the last very important project, which was El, Roblar, was like hurry up and approve it tonight. And, you know, these are some of the most significant projects that are coming across the city, uh, for, for probably in, in quite a while and quite a while for the future. So, um, taking a little extra time and a little extra thought to review this stuff, um, I, I just, I, I, I'm just blown away. I am blown away because I have long worked in cities where the, the planning commission really did their due diligence. And I, that's all I'm, that's all. That's, uh, that's all I'm asking. I, I just think that hurry, hurry up and getting it through and out to council without a full set of comments, um, you know, it's, I, I think I'm outvoted, but that's, that's how I feel about it.
All right, um, so is that an official motion that we have to vote on?
Well, we would need a second before there could be a vote.
Okay, all right. No second. Commissioner Bennett, did you wanna make a motion?
No, I, you know, I'm sort of struggling with, um, where do we go from here? Um, I, I'm, I'm mindful of the fact that a lot of work has gone into this. Um, as I say, I, I thought of it as having some interesting answers to, uh, thorny problems. Uh, I think we have as a, as a community a reputation for making things very hard on people. And okay, that's, on one level, that's good, 'cause we protect our community first and foremost. Um, uh, on the other hand, um, there's some things that are, that, that achieve a, you know, a, a, a point where they should, they, they should just either be done or not done. Um, and I hate to give a signal to a longtime investor in this community that, um, that, uh, he sits down with two members of the city council. City council members believe they've driven the, the best deal that they can possibly drive on the set of issues. And, um, I, I agree with the idea that if we're gonna send it back, we have to send it back with something, 'cause otherwise it's like, huh? I mean, it's like we're, we have to shrug and, I mean, they have to shrug and say, well, we, we did the best we can, but if, if you don't tell us what it is that we're missing, we don't have anything that we can go do to make it more acceptable to the next time. And I think that's the, the frustration. There are a whole lot of things out there, but I'd sure hate to sort of say, well, why don't you go and try and do a better job on, you know, the, uh, the electro-mechanical, electronic issues surrounding the substation, the Southern California substation, when I don't know there's any issue there at all. I mean, you know, if, um, uh, and same thing with trees. You know, I don't know that, that there is a tree issue there. Um, but if, if we believe there's a, but there could be a tree issue, we could say there's nothing in there about, you know, oaks and sycamores and the, and the protected trees that we do look out for. And we don't have a, we don't, we don't have any analysis on, on that and we don't have any analysis on, I, I don't know whether we have a, a right to get involved in the selection of the, of the tenants to go into these developments. But, you know, you do hear terrible stories about people who were tossed out and then can't find another place. Among them, one of the council persons right now is, there's an article in the paper about her inability to find something in town to, to live in. So I'm, you know, I don't wanna be a cavalier and sort of say, well, you know, uh, we, 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 we shouldn't and can't concern ourselves about that, but it would seem to me with four different sites here, some, you know, pre-planning on that and, um, might make some sense and, and ask that to be a consideration in a, you know, in a revisit of some of the issues so that they could spend some time on that issue, if that's the issue. Um, but, uh, you know, I just hate to, again, um, sort of toss this all back at the, at the councilman who did the work and, uh, and toss it back to the city council and say, you know, we don't have anything specific to, to offer you here. We're not recommending it, but we're not saying no way.
So are you, are you, you wanted to go to city? You wanted to go to city council, is that what you're thinking?
Um, yeah, I guess.
Okay, okay. So I don't think that's, that's not necessarily a motion, no. Um, I'll, I'll go ahead and make a motion and then we can, we can vote on that. So, um, I'll make a motion, um, that we, um, make an approval for the city council regarding the development of the agreement and notice of exemption between the city and Ohio, between the bungalows and the Green Hawk LLC, uh, the Becker Group for multifamily housing and affordable housing, totally 65 units, 20 units at moderate income level, five units at low income level, located at four separate sites, including 3112 West Aliso Street, 10 North Ventura Street, 304 South Montgomery Street, and 412 Mallory Way, and then the project is exempt from CEQA. Um, I do have some conditions. I think that there is a traffic study that needs to be done. Um, I think we need to have a plan for the current residents in, in the cottage and on Mallory. Uh, we need to have a, the tenant relocation plan. Um, I also wanna see, um, some density study regarding a change from, uh, PL to village mixed use, uh, that, that will obviously increase density in the area substantially. Um, and that, those are the conditions that I'd like to see with a, with that motion.
Can I add a condition?
Sure.
I would like to be, be, uh, evaluate, the valuation of the, um, capture water recharge system of 150,000 at, uh, to, at Mallory Way and, and cottages to be fully documented.
Okay.
I put a water recapture system in my front yard. That's pretty, that's pretty cheap and we don't have any water flowing down the curb at all, ever.
Okay. So we'll make that, uh, part of the condition?
Um, you know, I wouldn't mind, uh, and I, and you, you tell me when the timing is, but the people who live, uh, on South Montgomery have a concern about the look of this, of this new development, um, and...
That, that should come back to us.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, that will absolutely come back to the commission.
Right.
The aesthetics.
I, I, I share that concern, 'cause those, the, the apartments that have been built there over the last few years are really very nice. And, uh, and putting a clunker in the middle of all that would be a shame.
Okay. So we're ready to vote?
We need a second.
Oh, we need a second.
Second.
Commissioner Lottis, okay.
Okay.
More questions?
Any more questions?
Interim Vice Chair Trent?
Mm-hmm.
A yes or a no, taking a roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Lottis?
No.
Commissioner Bennett?
Yes.
Motion passes, thank you.
Next item? Yeah, Chair Quilisi? If you're still awake? And do we have any other items on the agenda? Yeah, just maintenance stuff, okay. How you doing, sir? That was a beast. That was rough.
Only at the top, huh?
Oh, my goodness, you're right.
Actually, I think it'll be Gail Davis that will know. But yes, this is, you know...
Chair Quilisi, might it be wise to.
Ma'am.
Continue the other items? Mindful of the goals of the community?
Okay, thank you. Chair, I'll I'll give the gavel back to you.
We'll use it to end the meeting here soon, I think. Are we ready to start again? Okay, thank you very much, John. I I admire your work.
Thank you. Very ad hoc.
Okay, we're on to item three, priorities of planning commission and the community development department. I know we've we've looked at some of this before. Lucas, are there particular items here that you want to emphasize tonight?
And I'd like to emphasize formula business. Uh that one will be before this commission very soon. Uh I've been working behind the scenes with. Some business owners and some community community members to tease out some of their concerns. And and looking to address some of those through some sort of a potential. But without going into too much detail and getting in trouble, uh some of the amendments, potential amendments to the code. So that's as far as I'm going to go. The rest of those items, we've we've actually talked about some of these. Um any of the items that that we've knocked off this list, I've already crossed off. I'd like to do the the inauguration of crossing it out so that we get like a it's done and then it just comes off the list. I mean.
Yes.
And so that those are important pieces.
Publish the list and it shows. One line with strikeout font.
Exactly. We do a red line, maybe. That's I yeah, I think those are all great things, just to show that we're accomplishing things. We're moving forward on some of these pieces. The 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 VMU discussion that we had last meeting or is it the meeting before? I'm sorry, the the meetings are.
Two meetings ago.
Was it two meetings ago? That one's that one's progressing uh well as well. I I think we could see that here in the very near future. It just depends on how everything else lines up. And and the next item, I'll I'll talk about the potential logjam that's coming down down our way here in terms of all projects, so.
Okay.
But that's it for that's it for this priorities for planning commission. I think. This commission and certainly staff is embracing these items on a one by one basis and knocking them. Hoping to knock these out um as we as we move forward into the weeks to come.
Okay. Okay, I see parking study was one of those things and.
Yeah.
And traffic study discussed.
Parking study is a different beast only because I know that that the council had asked for the this commission and this body to look at it. But in also doing that, the wisdom of of council, they've created an ad hoc to 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 look at parking. So there's a bit of a um.
It's gonna be another one like tonight.
At this point, I think we're we're potentially not necessarily waiting, but at the same time, kind of waiting to see what happens with that ad hoc. And then maybe going from there full speed. I don't know.
Doesn't make a lot of sense to start a new inquiry before we have what the council wants us to do.
Yeah, it was it was tasked by the council when this came forward, what, in twenty twenty one? Yeah. But also things have happened over the last six to eight months, so.
Okay, let's move on. Item four, uh future agenda items. I see you you now have a batch of antennas going on top of the AT&T building?
Yeah, two oh two West Ojai. That is, that was, that will be noticed. You'll see that notice on the paper on Friday for this project. So it will be coming forward. For this body on the fifteenth as a public hearing item. Um the sign program is also noticed, three, four, five east.
And that's that entire building that has the.
Correct.
Restaurant brewery and the dry cleaners.
Dry cleaner and a retail.
Decorators.
Yeah, so though that's four businesses all within one.
There's a restaurant inside the brewery.
One building and one a part of a sign program. So yeah, we'll be seeing that. The lot line adjustment has been pushed to the July sixth meeting, so we won't see that one. Until the sixth.
Okay.
And then looking at the sixth, we have design review permit for three unit lodge at ten ten West Ojai Avenue. We've just provided them with updated information. I question whether that will actually be ready for July sixth. Because they're pondering our comments up to this point. Initially, we were looking at at the three units. They're they're evaluating whether or not um it ends up being three units at this point. So they're they're actually reevaluating their entire project.
Structures.
There are actually, there's three structures on that site, but the two, the three units, we I don't want to get into details on it because it. I don't want I I don't want to presuppose where that that project is going. It's still in the works right now, so.
Ojai Mountain Farms, I've seen that addressed before.
So that's a concept review. And we have all the information to send that forward, so we're just scheduling it. I don't see that changing from the July sixth.
The old bowling alley property?
It is, yes.
Oh, that's yeah, all right.
Glad to see that. Uh I'm sorry we didn't have time for a general plan update. Or or another element.
Want to, I know we we didn't schedule that, but when it come, I think the general plan is on here because I have some announcements to make for that too.
Oh, yes.
There's a lot going on right now. Uh we're certainly not slow on things that are happening for sure.
Okay, uh Commissioners Bennett or Lottis, any questions for staff about future agenda items? Well, let's.
All right, just know there's other projects out there that haven't been scheduled, so we we're trying to avoid the logjam. Everybody talked about that last year and we ended up having. What, three meetings in a row to get out of that logjam? I don't know how it's happening, but six months later, we're finding ourselves potentially in the same situation and predicament, so.
Part of your job, it's part of our job.
So I appreciate your patience um by this body, so.
Pending, I I see the Gables concept preview. That's the twenty one residences on Olive Street?
Yeah, I've asked for additional information and I've received it, so I'm reviewing that. Um the reason why it's not. On an official agenda is because I haven't necessarily felt comfortable with where we're at with it.
So maybe July twentieth, maybe August or later.
I think that's a question mark for July twentieth. Yeah, I think that's fair.
Very good. Then, back to. Any general comments?
So.
From from Commissioners?
The the next item is Director's Report, General Plan Update.
Okay, yours was first. All right. Yeah, sorry about that.
No, it's okay. All right, so. We've been going through each of these items, existing and potential items for for um these these elements. I wanted to also announce. And we've we've just started sending out the blasts that uh the next upcoming workshop. Will be held on July twenty eighth, which is a Thursday and it'll be between five thirty and seven thirty.
GPU update?
Yes, and it's going to be focused on um traffic and land use concepts. So that's.
Great.
That's what you can expect.
And we'll see that in the paper, I'm sure.
It'll, yeah, so we've got save the date flyers that are going out right now. Um we've already spent sent out the email blasts. Social media media will be dropping here very soon on that, but I wanted this body to hear that first. I said this with the first um. Uh workshop that we had, which was a hundred percent virtual, just given the circumstances, this one will be in person.
We're gonna do that over at Boyd Center or are you gonna use this new room next door?
We're using Kent Hall.
Kent Hall?
Yep, which is right over here.
Okay.
Yep, so we're gonna we're gonna showcase it.
Oh, gotcha. Uh structure.
It's a Thursday night, yes.
Thursday night. Okay, great.
What's what's the date again?
July twenty eighth.
You you know, it would help be helpful if all of the dates for the next two months or three months that we're considering be laid out. And and give us a chance to let you know about our personal schedules as we get into the summer months.
Oh, that's actually a really good point. Yeah, we could.
I as 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 you know, not everybody knows, I'm in New York right now and it's twelve forty in the morning. So.
Yeah, that's true.
I saw you panic when I said to you a week ago that I couldn't make it to this next meeting because I was in New York, but um.
Yeah, well.
Glad you could.
Appreciate you able to, yeah.
Good work.
This is where technology is definitely um our friend for sure.
Yes. Okay, uh is that was that the end of what you had to say?
That's it.
Lucas, okay.
I've said enough for tonight.
Oh, let's go around the horn and then Commissioner Lottis, you have anything else you want to add before we adjourn?
I have nothing to add. Thank you. And I I do want to uh thank John for good sharing. He's following in the footsteps of Chair Quilisi.
It's hard to fill, hard to fill.
Did a good job.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, John.
Of course, yes. Thank you guys. Thank you for your patience and and your support and understanding through it.
And Commissioner Bennett, any last words?
I know.
Interim Vice Chair Trent, any last words?
No, again, I just want to thank everybody here. Obviously, it was a long day. Uh but everybody uh, you know, handled the the change professionally and uh we were able to get through it and. I just appreciate all your support.
Well, I think the interim vice chair handled it the most professionally and I thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, well, there being no obvious other business before the commission and our city council liaison. Either spoke earlier or isn't here. I'm not sure who the liaison is. Oh.
Oh, is it Ryan?
Ryan Blatts. Oh, well, sir.
I am actually here.
You are actually here. Well, come on down.
I have been watching and uh wonderful job, John picking up everything.
Thank you.
And um I thought it was a very interesting discussion. I have my own opinion about everything, but that's why we stay out of it. It was really good to hear, though, a good, robust discussion and I can tell you, I'll make sure to bring back. A lot of the things that were mentioned to my colleagues.
Awesome. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, and I have nothing to add. So at nine forty two, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.